Quiet in here pretty quickly. I'd like to bring this workshop to order, please, and just launch right into our agenda since we have quite a bit to cover. And so the legislative session wrap-up. Brian? And where did Chris Rose go?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Lowak, Assistant County Administrator. Here this morning to give you an update, legislative wrap-up of the session that just concluded. I also want to acknowledge our partners from the Southern Group that are with us today. They represent you in Tallahassee, Laura Beamer, as well as Mike Moore. And they'll come up shortly after this presentation. So kicking off, just a few bill stats that I wanted to bring to your attention, kind of tells you about session. So there were over 1,800 bills and PCBs filed this year. That number looks like it's down from last year at, well, it was 3,500. However, this year appropriations projects were not required to be filed as standalone bills. So 1,873 bills and PCBs, those were all policy. That's a lot of policy that took place. There were over 2,600 amendments that were filed, and ultimately, when session concluded, there were 365 bills that were passed by both chambers. And that'll be presented to the Governor. So we'll start off with county priorities. These are priorities that were passed, that were included in your legislative program. The first being HB 1563, the Greater Seminole Area Recreation District. Representative Jock was the bill sponsor here. That did pass. What it does is it dissolves the Greater Seminole Area Recreation District and transfers what's known as the SYAA property to Pinellas County. And it also does require that that property be used solely for recreation. As far as appropriations, AirCo infrastructure improvements, Senator Hooper sponsored it in the Senate, and Rep. Jock sponsored it in the House. The initial ask was $5 million. They were able to get secure 2.5 million dollars in the final budget. Whedon Island Salt Marsh Restoration Project, Senator DeSiglian, Representative Cross carried that. The ask was 500,000, and the full ask was included in the budget. The third appropriation that was requested was $3 million for backup generators for special need shelters. The county did not have a match on those. Those were not included on the budget. The pushback we got was we didn't have a match. We acknowledged that going in, but we thought there was going to be a push on generators, given what happened in southwest Florida this summer. That did not occur. The last priority is House Bill 1383, which was local occupational licensing. This bill, as you recall, is in response to a bill that passed the previous legislation that preempted local governments from having the ability to license specialty contractors at the local level. Unintended consequence of that bill in 2022 was that here in Pinellas County, there are 1,600 contractors that that local license that our PCCLB provided was their only ability to go and pull a building permit for what they, the work that they perform. This bill, Senator Hooper sponsored it in the Senate, and there were numerous bills filed in the House. And worked very closely with Florida Association of Counties and a coalition of other counties that were interested in this. And the ultimate product came out such that you see before you. What it essentially does is it extends the current licensing that you all, that our PCCLB does was set to expire on July 1 of this year. This bill extends all those licenses that are already in place out for one year until July, July 1, 2024. It requires that the state construction industry licensing board by July 1 of 2024 establish certified specialty contractor categories for voluntary licensure for 12 of those specialty contractors that were impacted. It provides that local governments may require a license issued by the local government or CILB to perform a job scope which does not substantially correspond to one of the state contractor specialty category licenses. And it also allows us the ability in perpetuity to continue to license some of those that were already in place. What does that mean to the contractors here in Pinellas County? Those 1,600 that were impacted by the 2022 bill, this bill completely resolves the issue for between 600 and 700 of them. There are nine categories that are still out there. Those are extended for a year, makes up about 1,000 contractors in Pinellas County. Right now, we're still, the Contractor Licensing Department is still working. They put together a group with all the building officials and municipalities to look at what those impacts are, who requires what permits, and we will know from there how many folks will still be impacted after July 1, 2024 if we don't have follow-up legislation next So now I'll go into other bills that passed this year. Senate Bill 170, 170 local ordinances. So the highlights here are that moving forward, October 1 of 2023, certain ordinances that the Board of County Commissioners passes, they are required to conduct a business impact statement prior to passing those ordinances. Additionally, the bill allows that civil action can be brought to, can be, civil challenges can be brought to local governments on the ground that an ordinance is arbitrary or unreasonable. Right now, someone doesn't like an ordinance, they have the ability to bring action against that ordinance. However, this puts in state statute, now they can do it for, if they believe it's arbitrary or unreasonable. What arbitrary and unreasonable means is still up in the air. If somebody does bring forth a challenge, that ordinance is, cannot be enforced until that civil dispute is corrected, is resolved. And then you'll see the last bullet there. This provision, you'll recall, the county attorney's office has brought this to your attention in the past, but sometimes you all have a public hearing item that is, gets continued, however, it's not advertised again on its own. This sets in statute that so long as you put a time certain on when you're continuing it too, you can come back and make a decision on that at a future meeting. Senate Bill 102, the Live Local Act, this was a large bill, a large housing bill priority of President Pasadomo's. A few things that I want to highlight here is that it does authorize local governments to approve mixed-use residential developments at their direct, at their direction. If it includes affordable housing greater than 10% of the units within the development, these can be in commercial or industrial areas. Currently, you can do that in industrial areas. This adds commercial. It also requires counties to authorize multifamily and mixed-use residential, in mixed-use and commercial zones, if 40% of the units are affordable for 30 years. Additionally, on those projects that qualify, you can no longer regulate the density and the land use on, the density and the height. So what does that mean in Pinellas County? It means that the maximum density you currently have in your code is 35 units per acre. So if it's a qualifying development, they're entitled to 35 units per acre. As far as height, your code allows for up to 75 feet. So right now, if a project qualifies, it can be, it's granted at least three stories up to, up to 75 feet. There are additionally before you a number of state and local optional tax, property tax exemptions. If not-for-profits provide affordable housing on their property, as well as rehab developments that are turned into affordable housing. They do also become eligible for tax exemptions. House Bill 1417, residential tenancies, keeping with affordable housing. This preempts local governments from any regulation of landlord-tenant relationship, including all those sub-bullets. And it also revises the notice period for terminating a tenancy to no less than 30 days or no more than 60 days' notice from the tenant or landlord. So you will know, I will note that already local governments in a different, in the Live Local Act, local governments are preempted from establishing certain, certain, certain ordinances related to housing and rent increases. This preempts all those. So here in Pinellas County, the ordinance that's on the books right now will be preempted. 346, public instruction. The big thing here is it revises the definition of a public works project as any activity that is paid for with any state-appropriated funds. Currently in statute, that threshold is a public works project includes up to $1 million. Projects that include up to $1 million with state funds, this wipes that out. If there's local, if a project is 100, paid for with 100% local funds, you're allowed to have certain ordinances related to how these contracts get awarded for public works projects. Now you can only do that if it's used 100% with local funds. In Pinellas County, your Small Business Enterprise Program, that offers a shelter market for contract, SBEs in Pinellas County on contracts up to $100,000. So as long as those projects are paid for 100% with local funds, you can continue to do that, and there is no impact. On Senate Bill 250, this was a massive natural emergencies bill. And a few of the notes that I want to highlight are that following a state of emergency declared for a natural emergency, local governments impacted by the emergency shall approve special processing procedures to expedite permit issuance for permits that do not require technical review. Additionally, local governments may not prohibit the placement of a temporary shelter on a residential property for up to 36 months or until a certificate of occupancy is issued on the permanent structure on the property, whichever occurs first. And they do have to, it does have to be used as a residence, has to be connected to water and utilities, and the resident must be making a good faith effort to rebuild or repair the permanent structure. Local governments located in areas designated in the FEMA Disaster Declaration for Hurricanes Ian and Nicole may not raise building inspection fees before October 1, 2024. The bill revises the tolling of permits following a declared natural disaster from the current six-month period up to the new 24 months. And the bill prohibits a county within 100 miles of landfill, or landfall area of either Hurricane Ian or Nicole from adopting comp plan amendments or land use regulations that are more burdensome or restrictive than currently exist. And this provision expires in June 30 of 2025. Checking with the BD RS, those provisions do not impact anything that we currently have in the works at this time. Senate Bill 1418, emergency communications. This may look somewhat familiar. This has always been a priority of the county, specifically Jim Fogarty. This was in your program a couple of years ago, and it touched on the E911 board and the E911 fee. And this increases the distribution of wireless category for voice communication services portion in the E911 fee. So it increases that portion from 76% to 95% that the counties will receive. It also expands what those E911 funds can be used for. We have a large amount of our general fund that subsidize, that's used for those projects that we've always felt the E911 fee should be allowed to pay for. This bill allows us to do that, specifically CAD, the CAD project and costs associated with that. And it also revises the E911 board, goes from 10 to eight members, but it keeps the county representation proportionally the same. Senate Bill 540, local government comp plans. What this does is, in challenges to comprehensive plan and plan amendments, including small-scale plan amendments, now the prevailing party is entitled to recover attorneys' fees and costs. And it also clarifies that the scope of review for a local government decision to grant or deny a development order by providing that the order may only be challenged if it would materially alter the use, density, or intensity of the property in a manner not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The tax package, the big thing here is that it requires any referendum for special taxes must coincide with the general election. And in addition to that, it may only take play, it may only be on the ballot one time within 48 months prior to the reenactment or increase of the tax. What does this mean? Penny for Pinellas. You get one opportunity at the ballot at a general election within four years of its expiration. It also freezes local communication services tax rates at their current rates until January 1, 2026, and includes substantial amount in numerous sales tax holidays. Yes, sir?
Does that mean that it would have to be done in 2026?
2026 or 2028.
It says it may only take place once within, oh, within 48 months.
Yes, sir.
I got you. Thank you.
And then budget highlights in the FY '24 budget. There, it's $117 billion budget, 4.42% increase from the current year. Affordable housing was a winner this year in session, as you'll see. Last year, there were $362 million dedicated to affordable housing, mostly through ship and sale. This year, that number jumps to $611 million. That's historic funding for housing. Pinellas County ship allocation, the current year is $4.8 million. It jumped by almost 20% to five point, just under $5.8 million. Beach renourishment, the standard program stays consistent at $50 million, which is a win, but it also includes $106 million in additional beach nourishment funds for counties impacted by Hurricane Ian and Nicole. Resilient Florida got a ton of money, $320 million, and this has a numerous, a number of grant opportunities that the county, counties and local governments can take advantage of. We already have in the past, and we continue to do the same moving forward. Job growth grant fund got an increase from $50 million to $75 million. Wastewater treatment and septic-to-sewer conversion grants went up to $200 million. And Visit Florida, as you know, there was an attempt to defund Visit Florida. Ultimately, what came out of the session is they not only did not defund it, they increased the funding from $50 million to $80 million. One of the conforming bills in the budget that I wanted to talk about was the FRS bill. And this was a big bill. How they went into conference was the Senate had a position that they wanted to reform FRS specifically for special risk employees. And in the House, they completely revised the program. They went to conference, and this is what came out. Normal rate and unfunded liability adjustments, these occur every year. Reduced special risk retirement. So now it's going to be 55 years, 55 years old with eight years of service or 25 years of service at any age. There's an additional 2% contribution from investment plan participants. Drop eligibility is extended from 60 to 96 months, and it removes that drop window that you have to make a decision to go into drop from within one year of retirement age to anytime after retirement age now. It increases the interest rate of the drop funds from 1.3% to 4% and increases employer-paid health insurance subsidy from 1.66% to 2%. In Pinellas County, that equates to what started out as just under $30 million impact. Now it's a $15 million impact. Of that $15 million, obviously, most of that is over in the sheriff's office with those special risk employees. That accounts for about $10 million of that $15 million. And the remaining 3.4% to the county is spread out between different funds. 1.9%, I believe, is in the general fund. And then the last one, fertilizer ban preemption. There was a lot of press about this one, and this preempts local governments from adopting new or more restrictive, changing their fertilizer ordinances if they have one in place. This does not impact yours. We've got one in place. There's $250,000 in the budget for University of Florida, IFIS, to study the impacts of these fertilizer bans on retail sale and use during the summer blackout periods like we have here in Pinellas County. What are those impacts? Do they work? They're going to bring that back to the legislature at the end of the year. And before I get into questions, I'll go ahead and call up Laura and Mike for a few words.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Nice to be here this morning. I just want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to represent you in Tallahassee. Most of you know Mike Moore. Mike was a county commissioner before joining the firm, this is his first session with us. He's been a great addition to the team, being that he obviously knows your issues very well. And again, it's been an honor to represent you. One thing I wanted to remind you is to use this as resources outside of session. We have a huge team of subject matter experts from insurance, education, to healthcare. I mean, we recently hired the former, David Altmeyer, who was the former insurance commissioner. We just hired Henry Mack, who was education chancellor at DOE. So if there are policy issues that arise throughout the year, and you just want some advice, you want to know what the best practices are, please reach out to us anytime. Our doors are always open. We are going into an early session, so we will be reaching out to you sooner rather than later. Committee weeks actually start in September, so we need to get our agenda together early, budget priorities together early. We want to sit down with our legislators early, find out what their priorities are to make sure that they align, so we have a better chance of getting our funding initiatives. And Mike, I don't know if you want to say anything?
You took the words right out of my mouth, but it has been an honor to represent you in Tallahassee and across the state of Florida. As somebody that was actually born in Pinellas County, it's even more of an honor to be able to stand up for Pinellas County. So like Laura said, use this as a resource. If you ever need anything from, I think most of you, if you don't all have my cellphone, call anytime, you know, day or night. If there's something you need, something you need us to research for you. As Laura said, session starts earlier this year. Hopefully, the government, the Governor signs the budget any day now. Once that happens, we'll have a better idea of what leadership's priorities are as well, so it will help you obviously strategize when moving forward for what your priorities are in the upcoming session. So again, we love to, we look forward to working with you in the near future, and have a great day.
We, all three of us, are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, people? Commissioner Flowers, and then Justice.
Thank you. First of all, great seeing you guys. When I was in Tallahassee, I appreciate all that you did to assist me and to allow me to get some rest in your offices as well. And excellent job, Brian, on keeping us on task and working with us, sending us those updates, because that was a very, very helpful question. When it comes to the fertilizer ban, I know it doesn't impact anything that was in place prior to the passage of this. And I'm grateful that there will be a study with USF and IFIS, it's IFIS program. But do you know if it may But do you know if it may help to provide any additional reports that are out there that shows that a high nitrate level could give rise to the increase in the red tide that we've seen in our communities? And utilization of fertilizer such are, such as the pellets that we produce from our stormwater sewer program probably will be more beneficial for use because of its more natural content versus high nitrate fertilizers? Do you think any of that would assist for next session, or do you think that it's a wrap when it comes to?
Well, my first thought is that hopefully the study at IFIS, they're looking at those, and they're taking those into consideration. I know there are a lot of outside groups throughout the state, Sierra Club, different associations, environmental groups that are feeding the legislature that information today. Kelly Levy, our Public Works Director, she's very plugged in with those groups and associations and is active in many of those. And I know she's keeping me abreast of, of that information and how it's funneling out to legislature, but we'll continue to feed that as much as we can.
And then for the topic relative to permitting issues and concerns, it didn't go as far as it could have gone, so I'm grateful for that, but they're going to revisit it next year, correct?
Which, which one was that?
The permitting and licensing of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we expect that to come back next year.
And so my question there would be, because I think I mentioned it to Laura when I was in Tallahassee, to perhaps have some roundtable discussions with those small businesses who it would extremely impact and utilize them when going back next year or even in committees, because I know they're starting to assign committee, they're giving committee assignments early, to just put a face with how that would impact, not just impacting the county, but how that impacts individuals as it relates to their employment and what it would mean for them if now they have to either go get a contractor's license or work under a contractor, which means they may have to increase their costs because they're going to need to compensate that contractor for working under their license.
Yeah, so a couple, that's a, that's a very good point. So if you'll recall, when the initial House Bill 735 was passed, we were sounding these alarms, and FAC was alerting folks to it as well. But the response we kept getting is, is where are these, where are these impacted contractors and independent business owners? They, they, they weren't, they weren't sounding the alarms like we were. The bill passed. Once it passed, and counties and local governments started pushing that information out, notifications to those business owners, what was coming? Well, then they realized what was coming, and they got active. And so throughout this process, I can tell you, prior to the start of session this year, Michelle Krikovich from Pinellas County Contractor Licensing Board, we got her linked up, and actually, one of your partners got her linked up with the Senate committee staff on that. And she worked very closely with them throughout session to say, this is what it looks like in Pinellas. Here are the, the very technical things, and here, here how it impacts these, these folks on the ground. And she has, she's established a working group here in Pinellas County with these folks right now, and they're actively meeting on this and looking for suggestions on, here's what this final product's going to do in Pinellas County, and here are some, some improvements that could be made next year. But I'll also tell you, a lot of legislators knew about this bill and were involved in this bill this year. As I said, there were multiple versions filed, and this thing changed all session. And it was because those small business owners were calling their legislator, letting them know how this impacted them. So we'll continue to put that push on. That wasn't there last year. It's there now, and it's not going anywhere.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Sorry for the long-winded answer.
Oh, no, 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 that was me.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the fertilizer. I was a little concerned about the, the, I mean, it's always good to do a study to see the effectiveness, but $250,000 in basically six months to do a study of a statewide impact on that is a little concerning that they're not going to be able to really bring back the information necessary to give a true evaluation. And I hope it's not next session that we're facing, well, look, the study didn't really give us any good answers, and we were going to get rid of the all ordinances statewide. So I hope that's not what's coming next, but I think we really need to be on alert for that. I did want to ask about the, the SBE portion of the preemption. And is that for any project or is it part of a project? Because usually when we do these projects, it's, one portion of it is an SBE-qualified vendor. And so if any dollar in that entire project comes from outside state funds, then we would not be able to do our SBE? Or is it, can we bifurcate the project a little bit? I know it's getting into the weeds a little bit, but.
Yeah, I, I, the definition of the public works project is a project that has $1 of state funds. So what does that mean when you break a project up between PER, design, construction? I would envision that to be one project, the total from start to cradle, cradle grave, as they say. But we'll have to, we'll have to confirm with you.
Okay. The other one is the, we didn't mention it, but one that I think is very concerning to a lot of folks is the, the use of the, and I never say this, phosphogypsum waste in road construction. And it's something that I want us to, I know this wasn't on your, your list, but something that as a commission, I think we should be thinking about. It's now allowable for using this waste in road construction. I assume the state will be pushing forward with that. But I think it's something that we as a county should think about, whether we allow it to be used in Pinellas County. Certainly, I don't think we should use it on any of our local roads that we pay for. We may not be, have that ability on the state roads. But anyway, it's something that I want us to talk about more in the coming days. The other last couple of points is, one, I'll echo Commissioner Flowers. Ms. Beamer and Mr. Moore were a huge help, and their entire team, Seth and others, that are just incredible resources of information and access to different folks. Huge, huge help for us and really happy with everything that they were able to provide the services for us, so we appreciate that. And then Brian, I just wanted to know how you saw into the future and were able to get $80 million for Visit Florida, knowing what your next position was going to be? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, concerns, thoughts? No? Thank you very much, Brian. Now, colleagues, if you will just allow, Chris Rose has asked for an opportunity to just say a few words to us before the next agenda starts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. I'm very excited to be here today. I'm always here, but today in particular is effectively our first budget information session. And so we have our six independent agency partners out there. They're going to be giving their presentations today. I've asked them all to be brief because we all know we have a packed agenda today. But this is going to just start us off for next week and the week after, and ultimately culminate in two budget hearings in September where we, we have a budget that we collectively pass that, that we're going to work together on. So thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me on that, and I think Feather Sound is up first, so.
Madam Chair, this is Kevin Chambers, who is now approaching the podium and will address you on Feather Sound.
Good morning, Kevin. Welcome.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I don't have a presentation today. I'm just going to, just going to speak. So as she said, my name is Kevin Chambers. I'm the treasurer of the Feather Sound Community Services District. So I'm here today to give a little, little update on our district and a little update to the, to the budget for fiscal year 2024. So Feather Sound Community Services District is a special taxing district. It was created by a vote of the residents of Feather Sound and was established to provide the street lighting and maintain, develop, acquire, and improve the green space in recreational areas around our community. We're funded and supported by a dedicated property tax levy. Our board is made up of seven appointed members who volunteer their time. We have a chair, a secretary, a treasurer, and then four general members. We meet regularly to discuss finances, community improvement projects, and to hear community member comments. Our meetings are open to the public. Our green space purview includes the easements all around Feather Sound Drive, up to and including the main entrance sign and the Earl May's Recreation Area. That rec area includes a boardwalk, a gazebo, a children's play area, a basketball court, a soccer field, covered shelters with tables, and a dog park. We maintain those areas with mowing, irrigation, insect control, and tree trimming. Additionally, we lease roughly 300 streetlights from Duke Energy to provide street lighting around the community. Our largest expenses by far are landscape maintenance and electricity. I'm just going to get into some of our larger community improvement projects that we've, that have, that have occurred. We recently resurfaced the basketball courts and installed some lights there to be able to play when it gets a little darker out. We refreshed the boardwalk and gazebo and the Earl May's Rec Area. We installed a dog park, and our biggest project was remodeling the main entrance sign. Currently in the works is the re-landscaping and beautifying roadway medians around the community. And then down the pipeline, maybe perhaps looking into putting in a pickleball court, which was brought to us by a, a community member. At current, our request is roughly a 4% increase from last year's amount. We believe that trends with the current macroeconomic environment. Part of this is to cover some insurance and continue our normal operating expenses, which are increasing. I want to thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you letting me be here, and we appreciate all your support for our district. I'm happy to take any questions. I also believe Chris was going to come up and speak to you a little bit about some funding reserves as well. I don't know if we want to get into that or.
Any questions for Kevin? No? All right, Chris? Thank you.
So Commissioners, just one thing, we've been working with all of these special districts as well as our appointing authorities, our departments, everybody. In particular, Kevin and I have been talking about the reserve levels in Feather Sound. They've been having some trouble getting insurance, and they've been putting their reserves up a little higher to, to deal with that situation going forward. We have some more discussions still to go. We want to see what the July tax roll is for them and see what, how the relationship between the tax roll, the tax rate, and the reserves are going forward. But Kevin and I are dialed in together as we do that, so be happy to take any questions and still any questions for Feather Sound. And I won't get up here and do this for every one of them. This is, this is my one, so.
Any questions? Commissioner Edgar?
I just really wanted to say thank you, Kevin, and to the other six board members for stepping up. It is, it's not easy. It's not easy work, but it is truly important, and we appreciate it, and I know they do as well, so keep up the great work.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'll make sure to deliver the message as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you, Kevin. Have a great day. And now we have the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative Budget.
Good morning. So good to see all of you today, and especially the new members of the commission since last, last budget hearing last year. The Pinellas Public Library.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. My name is Cheryl Morales. I'm the executive director of the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative. I am entering my 10th year as the executive director of PPLC. PPLC was created by the county in 1989 in order to bring all of the individual libraries together and to provide services to unincorporated members of Pinellas County. Previous to the, the creation of PPLC, unincorporated residents would have to pay $100 a year to use one of the member libraries, and now they can use any of the member libraries throughout the county through their, their tax contribution, so it's free. They don't have to pay a dollar, $100 for a card. The only people that have to pay $100 per card are residents of cities that don't support a library, like Kenneth City and the Reddingtons. No, I'm sorry, not the Reddingtons, the Belairs and the Indian Rocks area. So, but all of the unincorporated residents can walk into a PPLC member library, any of the 24 locations, and get a free library card and access 100% of the services and products provided. I'm going to guess on this. And, yep, okay. So PPLC connects communities. That's our main goal. PPLC provides, administers funding, county funding and state funding to all of the member libraries, as well as providing services with the funding that's available from the state. So some of the services are to connect the libraries to each other by providing courier service. So if a resident of one area wants materials that reside in another library, then those items are delivered to that library for the person to pick up. PPLC builds community partners, leads services for the blind and the deaf communities, improves organizational excellence, and supports growth and collaboration between member libraries. PPLC strengthens community engagement. We partner with many organizations and institutions throughout the county and outside of the county to enhance services to the public in Pinellas County. And one example is through the museum partnership program. We recently added free access to the Glazer Children's Museum in Tampa for anyone with a PPLC library card. PPLC leads in services for the deaf and the blind communities. The Pinellas Public Library Cooperative hosts a talking book library for the blind. It's one of nine subregional libraries in the state of Florida, the regional library being in Daytona. And the Deaf Literacy Center is housed in the Safety Harbor Public Library because Safety Harbor has had a very large deaf community, which is now spread out through, through the county a little bit more, Pinellas Park, Clearwater, but still the focus is in, in Safety Harbor. And the Deaf Literacy Center staff visit other libraries, conduct sign language education courses, and our very popular baby sign language course for hearing families that want to communicate with their children before they're able to speak. PPLC improves organizational excellence. We work very closely with all the member libraries and foster their development of their public service policies, while we're also, the organization of PPLC is working on its own policies and revising and updating the policies organization-wide. And every five years, we renew the inter-local agreement, and that is coming up in September this year, so you will likely be seeing that on your desk very soon. PPLC supports growth and collaboration with member libraries. The library directors meet monthly, and as well as subject specialists of the member libraries, we have a youth services, adult services, a catalogers, circulation staff. They meet monthly, and they talk about issues and share ideas with each other. Currently, throughout the county, I know it, it seems like it's been a while since COVID, and everyone should be back to normal again. I'm not sure if you received a copy of the annual report in your package? No? Can I get copies out? Okay, I'll leave them with you. Okay. So when you, when you see this, just a two-sided annual report, you can compare fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 21, and what you'll see is that people are still slowly coming back into the buildings and utilizing the in-person services and the physical collections. But at the same time, we're still seeing an increase in online services and online reading materials, so downloadable books, eBooks, and, and things like that. And, and that is all okay. We're just, you know, we're seeing a shift. Everyone's lives have changed, and we're working very closely to get people back into the libraries again. The libraries are doing a phenomenal job, every single one of them, in engaging the community and getting them in and working with them to help their children with their literacy and their reading, improve their grades in school, and strive to be excellent members of the community. I think that is the last thing that I have to say, and so I'm happy to have any questions, if there are any.
Any questions?
Just a quick question.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, thank you for being here again and sharing some of your feelings and thoughts. Just on the policies and procedures that you all establish as a PPLC, do all the members have to comply with those policies? How much latitude do they have to have separate policies from the overreaching cooperative?
Each member library has 100% autonomy to have their own policies, but the focus of the library director's advisory council, of which I'm not a member, I just sit and support them, they work together to develop policies that would present each library as a unified countywide provider of services. So for instance, let's say the Wi-Fi access at one library is free, but at another library you have to pay $5 for Wi-Fi. Well, then people will call you and complain, because why do I get this for free in Clearwater, but I have to pay in Largo? Now, those are just off-the-fly cities. It's not true. But that's just one example of how the library directors are working very hard with each other to create those policies. And to your point, Commissioner Eggers, and thank you for being very specific with that question, before the 2018 inter-local agreement was signed, all previous inter-local agreements had the library director's policies had to go through the PPLC board for review and approval. And the thing that the board and I worked on to give the library directors more autonomy was to take that verbiage out of the inter-local agreement. So now the library directors pass their own policies, and they do not go in front of the PPLC Board of Directors, and that seems to be working very well.
Okay. Yeah, I have some thoughts on that as well, but I won't get into that today. But I appreciate your being here and coming and sharing what's going on there. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Anybody else? No? Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much.
And Joe, now we have the Palm Harbor Community Services District.
Yes, Madam Chair. So approaching the podium today, we will see Ms. Lois, and I apologize, Lois, I'm going to mispronounce your last name. Anal? Ano? Enel?
On the other side.
I'm sorry, I got the wrong. I apologize. That's Eastlake. Excuse me.
Erica.
So we have Jean Kopola from the Palm Harbor Library, and we have Erica Linford from the Palm Harbor Community Services Agency. I apologize.
Here we are again. Good morning, Commissioners. I would let Jean go first, but he would never allow that. He is a fine gentleman, and he allows me to put you through the pain of my information first. The first thing that I would like to say is thank you all very much for taking the time, even our two rookies, as we call them, to come to our facilities or meet with us to get to know what's going on, so this isn't the first time we've talked. So thank you all for that. The other thing that I don't want to forget to thank you for is all the MSTU grants over the, I think it's seven or eight years now, that we've received. We are currently getting ready to start our Pop Sansel Bathroom Remodels next week, and I know that sounds insignificant, but Commissioner Eggers probably hears the most about that part, but it is used seven days a week, morning to night, and those bathrooms could not wait another moment for a remodel. So from the ground to the ceiling, everything's getting redone. So I know it sounds goofy, but people in the area appreciate. The other thing that we're working on with our operational monies that we get every year in our ad valorem, we have been capitalizing money, trying to save for bigger projects, so we don't always have to rely on MSTU. We're reconstructing the Pop Sansel Pier, which I also know several people in the room have heard about, the condition of that pier over the years. We are waiting on our permit with the Army Corps of Engineers, but I did receive an update this week that it has been assigned a technician, which I hear is progress in that world. So we're hoping that permit gets approved soon, and after summer's over, we can start that demo and reconstruction. I just wanted to give you a couple updates on what we've done in the last year that are outside of Parks and Recreation, because you think of soccer and football and baseball when you think of Parks and Recreation. We partnered with Feast this year and put one of their collection sites outside our doors. Our building is used seven days a week, and they're getting pounds of donations every week coming through our doors because that bin was positioned out on the sidewalk. Again, seems insignificant, but with the usage that Feast is getting, I'm sure some of you are familiar because we've talked individually about it, but the need for food for the insecure in North County has tripled since COVID or quadrupled. We're serving over 4,000 people through the Feast stores in Palm Harbor right now. So that's one of our outreach missions in Palm Harbor this year. One of the other things we did after Hurricane Ian, we were a collection site for donations, and we took one of our Parks and Rec trucks and 20-foot trailers, and we drove, I don't know how many cases of water and drinks down to the Salvation Army. We partnered with Red Cross and went into their directed sites twice. And those are, again, things that, as a community-supported agency, we're proud to say that we participate. Even on a small level, it's a help to be able to do that. And I believe we partnered with the county in December this past year and did a food handout at Sunderman Complex. We're hoping to do that at a different location. It was a little bit off the beaten drum. I think Commissioner Eggers would agree, Commissioner Justice, whoever else was there. We would have liked to see more people come through, but it was a fantastic first time at that, and I hope we get to do that again with the St. Pete Free Food Clinic in Pinellas County. Some of the things that we're preparing for, as you know, the Penny for Pinellas Project of the community center slash emergency shelter is on pace, I hope, to see demo here by the end of this calendar year. I know we've met with the architect virtually, and we're finalizing the scope with the county and the architect, and we'll get together with my chairperson and the players at the county and the architect's firm to come up with a rendering. So that's exciting for the community to actually see some movement on that. We're also awaiting plans and approval for the 2,500-square-foot building that, out of the money that we save every year out of our operational budget, to build another programming space for long-term, add an asset to our books, but to utilize primarily during construction and thereafter for programming year-round. Currently, right now, we have four or five camps that still occur in that auxiliary building that will be demoed, so we're looking for a place for them, as well as a charter school that uses it year-round. So that's important to us, and we're hoping by the end of this year we'll have the plans approved and going into 2024 construction. We're excited that we've added 20% to our programming scope year-round. I know I talk a lot sometimes when I meet you guys about our summer camp program, which supports a lot of our year-round free and reduced programming. We just added Zumba Gold, so anybody in August wants to come visit us, I hear that's exciting. I think Commissioner Justice knows how popular pickleball is at the center. We're now offering that six times a week, I believe. We're open on Sundays now just for pickleball. It is a crazy, popular program. Through, again, fix of funding that we've capitalized, we replaced the flooring in the main building. Every classroom now has flooring upgraded from the '90s and looks fantastic. And we hosted our first Suncoast Orchestra that had almost 100 visitors, the first one we've done since COVID. We have returned to pre-COVID numbers on most of our programming. Our outdoor spaces have tripled the use since COVID. I think that's a swing that we won't see change. We are refurbishing our soccer fields right now, and they'll be shut down for the summer because of all of the overuse that it gets year-round. We did grow our staff to 13 full-time employees, and we're thrilled about that. We were able to hire one more person this year, and we hope and pray that our programming continues to rise. We're at capacity right now. Our camps are sold out, so we're hoping that with the expansion coming, that we'll be able to grow those programming. Before I ask for questions, I just would like to publicly on the record ask for our whole allotment of the quarter mill. We received fantastic, and that's sarcastic, news about our insurance renewal. It went up, I don't know, Deborah probably can quote the exact percentage, but almost 50%, and we all had to have some cardiac refurbishment after that. But we did have to dip into some of our reserves to pay that bill because none of us budgeted for that. So we're hoping that you can allot our whole quarter mill each so that we can continue to insure the facilities. Any questions you might have? Trying to keep it brief, Chris.
I have a comment.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, no questions. You guys are always, all four of you, so available if there's ever any issues or comments or questions, so thank you for that. Thank you for being here today. I really wanted to focus on the work you do for the community, and it goes to all of you, but to you specifically, I wanted to, you know, say thank you for your involvement in Feast. I think that's a huge thing for the community, and the involvement, obviously, when we get together and do something with the county, I think it's really important as well. Also want to thank you for always stepping up and being available to be involved in anything that's going on in downtown. So whether it's the retailers or the chamber that is looking to do things, and your piece of property sits right there, you're always willing to be a willing participant and listener and make things happen on that piece of property, which is so integral. So thank you for all of that as well. I just think that it's amazing, if you go by the libraries or your facility, how busy they are and how much you all are so in contact with what those residents really need and want, and so I just really wanted to commend you. It is a battlefield 12 months out of the year, and I know you guys do great work, so I appreciate all that you do and stepping up on that pier, which I think is somewhat of a county responsibility, and you guys have gone on ahead to do it because you know how important that is to the culture of the community. And I certainly hope that at some point that we can circle back on that issue to be of some assistance in making that happen, so.
You too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else?
I knew it.
No, I just want to echo everything Commissioner Eggers said.
Ditto.
Wow, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Jean?
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Jean Kopola. I'm the library director at Palm Harbor Library, and libraries have been taking a turn for the better as far as attendance is concerned. And just to give you an idea, as of March of 2020, just before COVID hit, we are running about 25,000 people per month into the library. And then about last year, we were running about 9,000 people. Latest stats for May of 2023 is 14,000 people, so people are coming back, and we really appreciate that. I think part of it is because of a survey that we recently conducted where we had over 500 responses. One of the main reasons why people come to libraries today is to be with other people in a neutral environment, where they can gather, feel safe and secure, and talk with one another's. To that extent, then, we started providing more programs for people to come, and just up to this May of 2023, we've had over 700 programs and over 16,000 attendees. People are coming back. They enjoy the libraries. They like being there and being safe and secure. And on that point, that's been one of the things I've been trying to focus on this past year in fiscal year '23, is to provide a safer, secure environment for our residents. The line I see is always wavering between providing open access to a facility, as a public facility as we are, yet at the same time providing safety, security. Where do we go? How does that line go from day to day? Some of the concrete things that we've done is that, and some of this, I think I've explained or expressed to some of you already, we've already installed bulletproof glass in the children's rooms, so at least we know one area that will be secure. I also took a walk around the library to find out access points or exit points, and because of that, and with the fire commissioner's approval, we've now recently installed an additional exit door. And it really came to use because recently we had a surprise fire drill at the library, and everybody was out of the building within less than two minutes, which was wonderful, and some of the people that were in the library actually used that new exit door. So that really came to fruition right away. But the other aspects about facilities enhancements that we're doing, I want to thank all of you. One, Erica has already mentioned, which is the MSTUs, because of the MSTU funds we've received over the several years, we've been able to refloor the entire building, which is 26,000 square feet. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We really appreciate that. But probably the greatest thing is probably going to be happening, hopefully tomorrow, which is when our roof is going to be replaced, so thank you for that. Last time the roof was replaced was in 2002, which the library had to pay for, so I appreciate the county stepping up and taking some, providing some assistance in the facility that you own. It should be there for about a month or so. I don't think we'll have to close at all, so I want to thank you again for that because those monies that would have been used for that are now can be diverted to services and programs and so forth, so we appreciate that very, very much. One of the things we recently did was completed a long-range plan for '24 through 2026, and I'll give you a copy of that as soon as it becomes available. But one of the major things they talk about is outreach, which I think libraries do well, but we could always do better. Some of the things we've been doing for outreach for the past two years, which has been proven to be very supportive of the community, is we participate on the Meals on Wheels program. So we have staff, including myself, every Friday that go out and provide Meals on Wheels to the community, which is all at the same time to wave the library flag in our library vehicle. So I think it's a two-for-it, it's a win-win for everybody. We also provide homebound delivery service, which some residents just can't come to us. Online services is fine. It's nice. It's not the same thing as meeting face-to-face with individuals, so we are doing that also. And some of the services that we recently introduced this year, I like to say, you know, we can't, we only have so much money in our budget to do so, so we've been very fortunate over the past several years to receive some private dollars to introduce some new innovative services. We try to make reading fun as much as possible, and one of the things we recently were able to acquire was for about $12,000, and was private dollars, was a new short story machine. And this short story machine, unfortunately, there isn't a company in the U.S. that's making it, so we had to go overseas to get this in France. But this short story machine, when you come in, there's three buttons you can press, either children's, adults, or Spanish, and when you press the button, a short story will come out, either one, three, or five minutes in recyclable paper, and people really get a kick out of it. They really, really enjoy it. Makes reading a little bit more fun, it makes it a little bit more interesting, and it's always there. The other private dollars we used recently is getting an outside musical garden. And what I mean by that is that the library tries to be, promotes and supports the performing and visual arts. And we understood that a lot of people still didn't want to come into the library because of the enclosed environment. So our thinking was, well, could we provide something outside the library and take advantage of the weather that we have? And through private dollars of $21,000, we were able to secure these permanently installed outdoor musical instruments where kids and adults and anybody can come and play and enjoy them. And it basically gives them more of a whimsical feeling, and people really enjoy doing that. So those are some of the things we're doing. So I want you to be aware that even though we're trying to provide more services and programs, it's not always on the tax dollars, the taxpayers' backs. We are always looking for private funding. One of the things actually we're going to be doing this coming year, because we just can't sit back and just wait money to come to us, we need to do a lot of fundraising. So we are creating a brand-new fundraiser that's going to be happening in July, and it's called Christmas in July. It's going to have a Victorian theme. We're working with the House of Make-believe, Queen Victoria's there, I think Charles Dickens is going to be there, we're going to have some mulled wine, she'll be interested. The whole idea is it's all fundraising, and the idea of the monies that are raised for this, including other private dollars, is to create an adult maker space. And this is an idea that libraries are doing across the country, which is where you come in, and you have tools, it's all free, and you have the opportunity to create new things. So it's one of the things that we're looking forward to doing, and hopefully this fundraiser will help in that regard. The estimated amount that we're expecting to receive through our tax dollars will be able to provide all of our expenses, but as Erica alluded to before, we are going to be taking a little bit of a hit because of the property insurance, which was obviously far more than what we thought, which is what we're all experiencing. So we may have to make some adjustments in our services and programs to compensate for that extra cost, but somehow we'll figure it out. And then formally, again, on behalf of Erica and myself, we formally request that the recreation in Palm Harbor Library receives the full half-mill for fiscal year '24. Are there any questions I can answer for anybody at this time?
Commissioner Lot Vala.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have a series of questions, but I will be brief. Jean, we emailed back and forth yesterday, so this will come as no surprise to you. What times of the year does your library have the most kids visit it?
Probably during the summertime, I would think, and maybe during the holidays. Probably during the summertime, I would think, and maybe during the holidays.
Okay. You have a pretty significant display in your children's section that I'm, that you're aware of, that has sparked quite a conversation between children in your community and their parents. So we're going to have a similar discussion.
Mm-hmm.
This display features drag queens, books about gender identity, specifically Who Are You?, A Kid's Guide to Gender Identity, The Pronoun Book for Kids, 'Twas the Night Before Pride, Love in the Wind, and then a, this picture here, which features different flags with the words "demisexual," "bisexual," "pansexual," and "gender fluid" underneath each of them. And so my question is, how long is this display featured in the children's section?
It will be for about the June in recognition of Pride Month. And it'll come down as of June 30th.
Okay. So my question is, I find it rather odd that there is not a similar pride display in the adult section. And I support, on Tuesday, the county commission is doing a pride proclamation. And I'm supportive of that proclamation. So why does your library not have a pride decoration in the adult section, but in the children's section, it's like a pride parade going through there?
Actually, we do have displays in the adult and in the teen area. And recently, someone came in and checked out all the pride books in the teen area. But yes, we do have it in both sections, all three sections.
Is it as significant as the, as it is in the children's section?
Yes. We have a display with the signage and books, various backgrounds in both areas, yes.
I, as far as I'm aware, you have received numerous complaints, at least three or four this week that you are rather dismissive of. And, but I, and I'm not going to read from all of these books, but I want to read from this Who Are You? book, which is A Children's Guide to Gender Identity, which is for the ages of two to seven, which is on the shelf in this section. And it says, and this is, I'm reading verbatim from this book, "When babies are born, grownups make a guess by looking at their bodies. Some people say they are only two, there are only two genders, but there are really many genders. You are who you say you are because you are the best, who you feel like inside, who you know to be. This can change from day to day. For some people, the grownups guess right about their bodies. This is called cisgender." This book goes on to talk about the gender spectrum, lots of ways to be a boy, lots of ways to be a girl. It lists many of the genders. And now I'll take us through a little bit of a health class to talk about the different genders that are in this book. Cisgender, transgender, queer, non-binary, gender fluid, gender neutral, two-spirit, gender queer, bi-gender, neutrosus, agender. So my other question for you, and in your email to me, you acknowledge that you are a government-funded library, which I certainly agree with, and that you're apolitical. But my question is, if parents do not want to subject their five and six-year-olds to this kind of material because you, you cannot miss this when you walk into the children's section. It's, it's not in the bookshelf. It's on top of the shelf. So my question is, if parents and taxpayers in North County and in Palm Harbor do not want to subject their kids to this material and do not want to have these discussions at a young age, are they supposed to just not go to your library for the entire month of June?
Well, Commissioner, first of all, we support all the residents in our community. And there are going to be materials in the past, and not just for Pride Month, that not everybody's going to agree on. As I mentioned in the email to you, we are apolitical. We have to respond to all the members of our community, all 60,000, and not just one or two. But we are respectful for all opinions. And I mentioned to you also that if anybody has any concerns about any material at all, they are more than welcome to speak to me directly. We do have a process in place to review material. Pride Month is a well-known month. The people will know what kind of materials will be available in public libraries across the United States. So if that is something that is not agreeable with you, which I actually respect, of course, then you probably may not want to bring children into the library at that time or in that area. But it's just a display, and it's only for a short period of time. I understand where people will be upset, totally. I really, really do. I'm a parent and grandparent myself. But I have to be mindful of everybody in the community and not just some members of the community. And I want to be responsive to all members of the community. So if the lady that came into the library.
And, and I know for a fact that it wasn't just one person. It wasn't just one lady. And I've seen multiple emails to you, including the email that I sent myself. So to say that it was one person or one lady is just patently false.
Well, actually, Commissioner, I only received two emails, and that was one from a private citizen and from you. I have not received any other emails from anybody else. If I did, I respond, I usually respond within the same day. So I'm not sure what's.
So, and I know who else has contacted you. So you, you have received at least three complaints.
I have, nobody else has called me, Commissioner, just the two emails. And I always respond. And if my record indicates anything for the past 23 years, I always respond to any pageant within the same day in a respectful manner, either calling or email. I never am dismissive at all. That would be the worst thing I can do as a director.
So basically, what you're saying is that if the taxpayers of Palm Harbor, or Eastlake, or Tarpon Springs, which, you know, we're not talking about a library in St. Petersburg or other areas of the county, if they disagree with having this display in the children's section, they should just not go to your library for the month of June?
What I am saying is that they have recourse, which I mentioned before.
That you're dismissive of.
I would never be dismissive of anybody. That would be inappropriate in my position.
You're dismissive of the email that you were sent, that you sent to me. You're dismissive of the email that you sent to another resident of this community.
I'm not sure how you mean I would be dismissive. But I'm always open to have somebody have a conversation. And I said, we do have a review process. If somebody wants to come in to review material, they have that right. And we will pull together an ad hoc committee and review their material. I'm open for that, as my record will state over all these years.
And you'll be open to residents having this, a similar display for Christmas, for Hanukkah, for whatever.
Absolutely.
Whatever the residents want. It'll just be a free-for-all.
We are apolitical. We do provide displays for all kinds of religious holidays and all kinds of different months, Hispanic Heritage Month, and Italian Heritage Month, Black History Month. We provide displays for all of them. We do it across the board, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you, Jean. Anything else from the rest of the members? Anything? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Lois, do you want to come up and make your presentation, please?
Good morning. I am Lois Cienel, Director of Eastlake Community Library. I thank you for giving the FISA entities the opportunity to speak before the board today as part of the 2024 budget planning process. Last fall, as Eastlake Community Library prepared for a new long-range plan, an extensive survey was created for all of the library's stakeholders, staff, patrons, board members, and community partners and organizations. Although we are one of the smallest libraries in the county, we have always strived to focus on customer service and patron-centered services and programs. To paraphrase the former mayor of New York City, Ed Koch, "We wanted answers to the question, how are we doing?" And see how these responses would impact our new goals and objectives. It was gratifying to see the following statistics. 98.9% of respondents replied that they felt welcome at our library. 100% indicated that the library has an important role in the community, and 99.5% found the staff courteous, helpful, and knowledgeable. The survey results yielded a strong strategic plan for 2023, 2026, called Roadmap to the Future, built on core values of community, learning, engagement, dynamic space, and inclusion. We are focusing on heightening public awareness of what our library has to offer, strengthening governance and cooperation, always trying to do more with less, and providing unique services. Our master plan for Phase Two is in its preliminary stages, addressing the critical need for more space for the library and community, as well as balancing the increased costs of an addition with opportunities for increased revenue. In the past year, the library has been able to make improvements and upgrades with the help of our county liaison, Nancy McKibben, the Board of County Commissioners, and Diana Sweeney and her team in Administrative Services. As of April, the 23-year-old roof was replaced under the lease agreement with the county. We used MSTU funds last year to replace two rotted wooden sheds with one large aluminum shed, which now has electricity and a portable AC unit, as well as a new outdoor canopy thanks to the Friends of the Library. This year's MSTU funds are being utilized to upgrade our Wi-Fi connectivity issues, the electronic road sign, and audiovisual equipment in our community room. We are hoping next year to request MSTU funds to upgrade the costly and inefficient light fixtures in the public areas with LED lighting. As with every county department and public entity, this year has not been without its challenges to our library. It's been difficult to keep experienced staff and find viable candidates for open positions as we compete with the private sector and even other libraries in the county with salaries and benefits. Because we are unincorporated, we cannot offer a pension plan or reduce healthcare premiums to a reasonable level without taking from other areas of our budget. Since the employees are the heart and soul of our organization, I am committed to increasing salaries without too many deep cuts in the operational budget. Without my wonderful staff to provide the programs and services to the community, the library becomes little more than a book depository. Our property liability insurance renewal rates initially came in at 65% increase. By reducing some coverage and increasing deductibles, the FISA directors were able to reduce this to approximately 37% increase. But we are expecting similar jumps next year. Despite these challenges, Eastlake Community Library is fortunate to have the support of the Friends of the Library who allocate funds to supplement our operational budget. We also have some generous private donors, as well as our passport services, that has generated thousands of dollars in the past year through application fees and passport photos. However, this too comes at a cost, since the 10 staff members who are passport agents must take time from their other duties to execute the passports at our facility. On the plus side, we have received rave reviews from our customers for this service, and it has brought in many new families to our library who might have, not have come through the doors otherwise. Another challenge facing our library, as with any public building, is the ongoing issue of safety and security. We have made some investments in updating alarm systems, providing training and drills for staff, and completing a site assessment with detectives from the Mass Casualty Planning Unit of the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Other related issues which cannot be adequately addressed without our Phase Two expansion include the lack of a fire suppression system in our building and the inability to be ADA compliant due to space restraints. As a result of our efforts to strengthen governance and cooperation, both Jean Capola and I are thrilled to see that Nancy McKibben has been appointed to the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative Board. Although all the board members represent the entire county, we have always requested that there be a voice for the 90,000 residents of North County, and now there is. As always, we will strive to continue to be good stewards of your building and request that the mileage rate for the next fiscal year remain at the present level. I would like to close with a personal story that highlights our commitment to our patrons and community. In March, I received a beautiful email from an elderly patron whom I personally assisted with one of our museum passes. I'd like to read some excerpts from his email. "Congrats to you and the Eastlake Library staff, an ongoing welcome asset to the community. I've read some articles on what makes a great library, and I think all apply to Eastlake. Your gizmos and gadgets collection is one of my favorites. I borrowed the automobile code reader, something I would never have purchased after receiving several estimates for transmission repairs of just under $2,000. With your gadget and some online help, I was able to fix my car's troubles with a part that costs less than $40. In this time of COVID, nasty people and economic stress, your library is a true value and appreciated sanctuary. This is what libraries are all about. I thank you for the time this morning, and again, appreciate all that you do for us." Any questions?
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Lois, for the great presentation. And I appreciate the hospitality and meeting everybody when I came up.
Thank you so much for coming up.
Quick question. It says that, that you lowered fees to be in line with neighboring organizations. Could you talk about that a little bit?
I'm sorry, what was?
I'm reading on one of the documents here that because of the ad valorem tax revenue that Eastlake Recreation is now receiving, we were able to lower our participation fees to be in line with neighboring organizations. So just, could you?
Well, most of our programs and services are not, you know, fee-based. Okay? So we had some that required us to charge for, let's say, of our program for supplies and so on. Okay? What we learned is that, you know, rather than even bother with that, okay, we simply don't charge for programs at all anymore. Okay? The only organization or supplemental organization to our library is the Friends that might charge for their, for their concert series and such. But we have waived fees and charges for many items. We no longer have the overdue fees, of course, except for some special items. But for the most part, we want to maintain a free, equitable, and fair playing field for all of the patrons that come into the library. We also have the food pantry to assist people, you know, with food insecurity in North County, as Erica mentioned, on the other side of the lake. So, you know, we're trying to make it a welcome place for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank you and Jean for your responsiveness and adaptiveness to your individual communities. On your budget submission, I think Palm Harbor got 300, and you're at 253,000 from the cooperative. What does that compare to last year? Do you know?
We did get a significant increase over the previous year. I believe it was quite a pleasant surprise. It was about, I believe, $28,000 increase. I'm sure Cheryl doesn't have all the numbers in her head. But it was, you know, extremely helpful, what with the increased inflationary costs and, you know, for, for items and for services and so on, as well as increases in, in everything. Okay? It was, it did help us to, you know, balance the budget.
And have with those and with the, the booming passport business that you're doing, that been able to balance out the?
That has helped significantly. I think this year, it is much more challenging because of the increases in, in health insurance and the property and liability insurance. This is going, this is a very challenging year for us. Okay? And we don't want to have to reduce services or materials in any way. I mean, even materials, books have gone up approximately 15% per, per title. So we do rely a lot on donations. We get some very good, good quality donations that we can add to the collection. Okay? And we do have the Friends of the Library that pay for a special collection of, it's called the Readbox, which is immediate availability of bestsellers and new DVDs.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Eggers.
Lois, thank you, as always. And you and Jean are just amazing folks, and the passion you have for your libraries and your folks that work for you. And, and as I was saying to Jean earlier, I said, you know, we don't always agree on everything. It doesn't matter. But you guys have your heart and soul in the right place. So thank you for that. You know? You know, it was several years ago that we decided as a county that, a county commission, that the facilities that we own be taken care of properly so that the dollars that would otherwise have gone to replace a roof at $400,000, that, you know, Jean's having to do fundraisers and getting $10,000 here and $10,000 there, were properly taken over by the county, and those dollars are now going to services inside. So that is a huge change. We also came up with MSTU funds because cities have ways of giving funds and getting monies to their libraries. And the idea was, let's make our libraries competitive. So we have these small grants that go out, and I think they have been helpful. They have given-
Extremely so, yes.
Some improvements with tax dollars directed at these four entities. So I think that's been a good thing. And then, most recently, getting a voice on the co-op. Again, nothing happens quickly, nothing happens easily. I think it's important to represent the unincorporated area because we have 24 cities that are doing a great job. So I'll come to the last thing, which is, how do we have our libraries be competitive? Now, I don't know the answer to this one, but whether it's salaries or benefits or retirement, there's got to be a way that these folks that work for our residents can compete, can have the same kind of benefits that are going on in cities across our county. And I'm not sure what the answer is. I don't want to hear the word precedent. I don't want to hear that, well, what if we do this, it means that? I just want to understand what can happen to help keep people working for the library, not only losing them to the private sector, which is hard to do much about, but at least other libraries that surround the unincorporated area.
I have lost, and so has Jean, several to other libraries because-
Yeah, and so, and so I'm not, again, I'm just saying that I think that's something that we need to be looking at and not closing our eyes to it. I don't know if it's through the MSTU tax piece that we have, not the general fund, but the other one. I'm not sure how we address it. I don't know what the answer, people smarter than me might, I know, have answers or can find answers. But I do think that all of these things, the first three things that I mentioned in this is all about making our libraries on par with the cities that are right here in the county that we live in. I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the services you deliver because you guys do a first-rate job, but I'm just talking about all the other things that make it more on par. So that's just my thought for the day, and I just really wanted to thank you again, you and your employees.
Thank you for your support, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Flowers, did you have something?
She was giving me the thumbs up. And Mark was very smart because he knows brevity is not my strong suit. He remains seated.
Okay, well, it's not my strong suit either, so you're in good company, number one. But number two, while our library people are still here, if you would indulge me just for a moment, because I didn't say anything, I have been processing the conversation, questions, or concerns that Commissioner Latvala had when he was talking with Jean Capola. And I'd like to circle back to that for just a moment with your indulgence to share a couple of things. While I don't necessarily have any issues with the subject matter being discussed, I'd like to clarify what I think I heard Commissioner Latvala say in terms of, you know, that book you were reading from? Did you say that the age limit for this display was from 2 to 7?
That is incorrect. The book that I was reading from, according to that book, was for ages 2 to 7.
So is the display for that age group as well?
No, the display is in the children's section of the library.
But I assume there are 2-year-olds in there?
Yeah.
That I have an issue with because I think education of all kinds is important for everyone. I do think there's an expectation that the material being presented is age-appropriate. And I cannot help but have this be a really personal thing to me because I have a grandson, a great-grandson, that is 2 years old. And there is just no place in my head, as I know him to be, and other 2-year-olds that I have had and been exposed to, think that that material is age-appropriate for a 2-year-old. And I'm curious, just out of curiosity, because it was an interesting dialogue going back and forth, to know how many of our other libraries have the same kind of display? While the library people are still here, do we know? Is that a common theme? I don't know.
And I will add, Commissioner, Madam Chair, that the books that I was referencing are not in the bookshelf. They're on top of the bookshelf on, as part of the display. And I assume I'm allowed to share the pictures? And I'll pass around the pictures, if you'd like to see them, of the books and the flags and the different things that are part of the display. That, so it's not like, you know, a parent can, because I believe in parents' rights, and parents' rights work both ways. You know, if a liberal parent wants to, or a progressive parent wants to teach their kids things that I don't agree with, that's their right to do. And, but I don't believe that parents should have to, you know, not take their kids to the library for one month just because they don't want to have to have these conversations with their kids if they're not ready to have these conversations with their kids when they're 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, however old they are. And the notion that one parent complained is false. My office received multiple complaints. And I know that Jean received multiple complaints because I saw them. And so, and I'm not sure, and that's a good question. I'm not sure, you know, what other libraries do. I'm just familiar with the Palm Harbor example because that's the example that was brought to my attention. And the, what I was told by the constituents is that this year's display is a lot different than last year's display and that it's not just a, hey, you know, here's a display that, you know, your friend may have two mommies, and this is why. You know, it talks about, you know, gender identity for 4-year-olds, and if, you know, an adult says that you're a boy, they may be wrong, and you're what you think you are, and if you're something today, you may be something different tomorrow, as the book that I was reading from is. I mean, that stuff should be up to parents, not up to Jean and the library to teach kids about. And if parents want to teach their kids that, that's up to them, but it's not up to a government-funded library to display those books if parents have an objection to it. That's just my thoughts.
So, does anyone else have any comment or thoughts? Commissioner Eggers?
First of all, as it goes with libraries, I guess this discussion is, as they say, the elephant in the room. We certainly heard a lot of noise about it around the country, around the state. And, you know, ultimately, I get back to the individual parent, and they have the right to do what they want in terms of raising their kids and educating their kids. What I would like to know, and I kind of got to my general comment or question early about policies at the PPLC and how they translate to local libraries, I would just like to separate fact from fiction. I'd like to separate fact from the noise that I hear out there about what access to books and access to things really means. I don't really know what it means. Does it mean we provide the books in the library so they're accessible to all kids of all ages at any time? Or does it mean they're in the library, but they're behind, and they have to be checked out at certain age levels with parent permission? I don't know any of that. I just hear things. And I just would like to have, at some point, maybe the PPLC and their policies can share with us that, who determines what's right and wrong on one level? And then, where does the parent guidance come in as far as access to books in general? So again, I'm not, I don't want to get into specific books because I'm certainly not the judge of it, although I'm sure if I read some of the stuff, I probably would have my opinion. I just would like to have some, just some understanding, what is, what's going on, and try to keep the rhetoric that's going on out there, you know, out of my head so that we can understand better for what's, you know, again, what's best for our residents here in this county. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Peters? Commissioner Flowers?
First of all, I want to say to all of my colleagues, especially to Commissioner Latvala, I appreciate, because a part of our role is to hear from our constituents as it relates to those things that they may not support or are not in favor of. So I do appreciate the conversation. And I support Commissioner Egger's desire to talk about this at a later time. I have seen displays like this in other libraries, but again, you know, it's up to the librarian, and I'm sure they probably have whatever conversations they need to have on another level to make sure that they're in line with whatever that local municipality's policies are. My concern is, when we start talking about things like this or desiring to do something, is that, what about the taxpayers who do want their children to read this information? Have access to it or to have it available? So when we get concerns from, I don't even care if it's 50, it could be 50, it could be 2, it could be 1, that 1 is important because they are taxpayers residing in our community, and they have a voice. But then, does that mean that their voice is any more powerful than the person who does support access? And perhaps they're not calling because the information is made available? There are some very good conversations going on in certain communities because of concerns with Maya Angelou, concerns with Toni Morrison. And these ladies have been poet laureates. They have written books over a number of years. And now, because of the environment and the climate, their works, their poems are being called into question. So, you know, maybe it's a conversation that we should have another day when we are talking about this in total, I'm sorry, please forgive me, when we're talking about this subject in totality. But I am just always, I try to always be thoughtful of the people who also pay taxes, who are also voters, and who want access. 2-year-olds, I don't believe, well, we do have some really smart 2-year-olds and 3-year-olds that can read, so let me back up on that one because I was teaching my grandson at 2 to read, you know, small, simple words, recognize, and all of that. So I can't even say that 2-year-olds can't read that book because there are some. And there are some, a lot of families I'm seeing that they homeschool their children. They take them to the library for either computer usage or to review books and stuff. Because I've gone to a couple of libraries, and I see them in there, and they're frequent flyers. So I do appreciate the concerns that the parents have raised. But again, I, you know, my concern is, or my thought process is, what about the individuals who do support that, you know, we have an obligation, whether we agree or not personally, we have an obligation to them as well. But I do appreciate, I do appreciate the dialogue.
And to your point, I don't, I think that's the issue, is how?
How do we do it?
What does access mean, and where is it available in a library? That's all. I, to me, it's like, well, do these books not need to be in a library? I don't know about that, but certainly they don't need to be accessible to certain age kids unless the parent says yes. They, so it can exist. If you choose to do that, then it should be fine. It should be accessible to your kids. But, and so I think there's an answer there. I don't know, maybe, I'm trying to oversimplify something I'm sure that is not because clearly, it's a national dialogue that's going on. So I'm not trying to minimize the, how complicated it is. But it really just comes down to, what does it mean? What does access mean, you know? So, anyway, yeah.
And I, did you have?
Now, my thought is, I mean, I agree, everybody, you know, I agree with what Commissioner Egger's is saying, that, nobody's saying it shouldn't be accessible, but I don't know that the display is age-appropriate. Even if the book says it's 2 to 7, I don't know that the display is appropriate. I have no problem with the display in the adult section, no problem with that at all. But, you know, I really am agreeing with Commissioner Latvala on the fact that it's the display, and that's what I have a problem with. I'm not saying the book should be gone. If anyone wants to have that book to read to their child, they have every right to do that. But I do think that some parents would be very uncomfortable having their child see the display if they're not ready and prepared to have the conversation. And so, and it's not denying access by not having the display. It's not denying access of any book. It's not denying any of that. It's not banning anything like that. It's just, there are certain things that I don't know are age-appropriate. So I do agree with Commissioner Latvala on this.
Commissioner Scott, you have anything?
Just real quick, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's worth having a further discussion at another point in the future about what does that access look like? So I think that's definitely something that we should put on a future agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Justice, you have anything?
No, if you want to have a future conversation, when we can actually have experts here that can go through the policy, because I don't think there's a wealth of knowledge, of the seven of us, of what the specific policy is, how many 2-year-olds are checking out books. And so, we want to do that with experts in the field, that's fine. But in this short part of the conversation, I don't know, it serves a lot of value.
Well, yes, Commissioner Latvala?
And I don't want y'all to misinterpret the whole access point that I, and the discussion. I'm not talking about banning books. I don't think the parents that were complaining were talking about banning books. In fact, one of the parents asked if they could set the books down so they could not be seen, and they were told no by the library. And so, the whole point about making a way to lodge a complaint, I'm not sure what Jean was talking about. And in fact, the Palm Harbor Library even has a section that talks about freedom to read, checked out, check out our banned books selection in the Friends of Library bookstore. And they've tweeted about that, too. So I'm not talking about, we're not the school board, we're not the legislature. And so, I'm not talking about that these books should be banned, parents should not have access to them. I'm talking about should, you know, why should a large group, and I would argue the majority of parents in Palm Harbor, have to not go to the library for an entire month if they don't want their children to see this pretty prominent display in the children's section? If they want to have the books in their library, that's fine. I don't think that a 5-year-old should be able to easily see it and then ask their parents about it. And so that's what it comes down to. If they want to have these books in their library, that's fine. I don't think that they should have prominent displays in their children's section for an entire month when they have said that the summertime is when they have most kids at their library. And I'm all for kids going to the library and reading. I went, I went to the Palm Harbor Library when I was growing up. And so, that's just my two cents.
Thank you. And I would just like to leave this conversation by telling you all how much I appreciate your willingness to dialogue on the issue because in the world we're living in, it's evolving and changing moment by moment. And I can't help but share this with you that in another chapter of my life, when I was the Director of Communications and Community Relations at the Motion Picture Association, there was a national discussion that actually ended up in the Congress about X-rated movies. And it all came about as the movies- And it all came about as the movie Deep Throat was being launched. There's probably a lot of people here that have no idea what I'm talking about. But, but same, same thing then about parents being concerned about their children that were going to this film and seeing things that were totally inappropriate for their ages. So that's how the G, GPR and X-rating system came to be. It was initiated by the Motion Picture Association of America. It was passed unanimously by the Motion Picture Association of Studios around the globe and ended up being, you know, in the Congress as a discussion. So things do evolve and things do change. And I think it's important that we all are not afraid to have these discussions. So to all of the librarians that are here, I apologize for the lengthy discussion and waxing on, but I think it's an important discussion to have. Okay, so moving on, unincorporated county updates. Oh, Mark, what was I thinking? I'm so sorry. Please come forward. Thank you, everybody.
Hello and thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mark Sanders and I am the Director of Eastlake Recreation. And I just, a few things about the area that I service. The population of Eastlake is approximately 32,000. About 70% of those folks have families. And it's a growing community by about 1% each year. The complex that I operate has four baseball fields, a T-ball field, and then one senior baseball field, two football fields, two soccer fields at our main complex, and then, or three soccer fields at our main complex, two soccer fields at our Meadow Comp, Meadows Complex, and two sand volleyball courts out there at the Meadows Complex as well. We've made several improvements since becoming part of the FICA organization. Eastlake Recreation started in about, in, in October of 2014. I was hired as Director in February of 2015. And I think the question that Commissioner Scott, that you had about fees was probably directed to Eastlake Recreation and not the libraries.
You know what? You're right.
So I can, I can answer that. The story goes that Eastlake Recreation before was known as Eastlake Youth Sports Association. It was a privately funded volunteer organization that ran Little League Baseball, the football organization, the soccer organization. They took care of the facilities and there were several infrastructure items that be, that started to become more and more expensive. So they had to start raising their participation fees in order to pay for, for that. It got to be so expensive that we weren't able to compete with the surrounding communities. So they brought busloads of kids down here to the Commissioner, one of the Commissioner meetings and was able to get the Commission to agree for the millage rate. And that's how we were created. So that did offer us the opportunity to lower our participation fees and help pay for infrastructure issues that needed to be taken care of. And speaking of those infrastructure items, there was lots of things that we added. We added new concrete driveways out at the meadows, electrical transformer centralized in the, the middle of our complex to operate all of our lighting. We added new LED lightings, lighting at the main complex. We added a new irrigation system with MSTU funds. We put in electronic closable gates so we could secure the facilities in the evening. We also added this past year, an entrance sign, a digital entrance sign, where we can post events, upcoming events and bulletins. And it just really looks great, set the, right as you turn into our facility. You know, we added new signage, we dressed up our, our, our infrastructure with new shell and parking spaces. It used to be very muddy when it rained and people would be getting stuck in the parking lot. So we eliminated that problem. Our main issues are parking. When we have large events, we just don't have adequate parking. And they seem to be an ongoing problem that we're still trying to find a solution to. Issues that we have is we are surrounded by preserve area and wetlands, and there's not really a lot of room to expand. So we're looking at other options, working with the county, working with a consulting group, PSG, looking at options with them. And then we are also, we, we, we have so many, so much a need for more field space. And because of the environmental issues that we're at and what we can use on our fields, it's hard to keep the grass growing. So we have a, a large usage area and a need for more recreational area out there. So we're also working with the county on trying to get a footprint within the trail system that they're going to be building out there in the meadows area. And so they're working with the company that, that, that's already in pro, the progress for the Wild Passive Recreational Trail Project. And there's Pinellas County and Burgess and Neipol is the, the company that, engineering company that they're working with. So we're working with them to try to figure out how we can fit more field space, concession areas, restroom, within the confines of that trail system. So those are our future plans. We really need more space. We need more parking. And obviously, I'm still working out of a trailer with no restroom, so that would be nice to have a building to work out of too. So, so anyway, in conclusion, I'll be brief. I know this is getting to be a long meeting, but I'm looking forward to the challenges ahead, hoping we can come to some, you know, some conclusion with finding parking and, and expanding in the future. So I'm, I'm asking that you would consider the .25 millage rate staying the same for Eastlake Recreation? And I would ask if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? Commissioner Flowers and then Commissioner Edgar.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you again for the work that you, you're doing out there. And I know that at one point, I don't know where it is, but I know that FICA had made it a priority to get that building for you. And I know that because of the emergency issues related to county ish, the county finding places to put folks during storms and that kind of thing, it kind of took a secondary position. So we'll continue to look at that as an option for sure. And continue, good luck. I think solving the national debt's easier than getting you parking. We've been at it for, I don't know, seven or eight years. I know it's not, and sometimes it's not for lack of trying. It seems like that movement to get some fields out there in the, in, in the other area.
It's very complex.
Might, might free up some places because if you move all of the.
Yes, that's a thought.
But the only thing I didn't hear in your planning is where are you going to put the pickleball? It just seems to be taking over everything, whether, you know, wherever it is. It's like, find me a pickleball court. And there, in Oldsmar, behind the flea market, there's a building back there that just does pickleball. So it's, it's, it's a crazed sport.
There was one of our.
I didn't say crazy, I said crazed sport, so.
There was one of our constituents that sent me a whole plan, sixteen pickleball courts, so.
So there you go. Yeah, anyway, great work.
Thank you so much.
Up to great work.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Did you have something? You had something?
I'm with you on the pickleball. I mean, that, that, that has caused some real, real strong conversations in places about pickleball courts. So help me help y'all. But I think you said, Commissioner Edgar, is what I was going to ask about. I know that since I've been on the Commission and I've had a chance to go up and visit, it would be nice if he had a place where he could have appropriate facilities. So, you know, now I'm like, can we purchase a tiny home off of Home Depot and just have them anchor it down? They can do some tie-downs and it's a building, so. And that's like $30,000. It's not a whole lot of money and you could have a bathroom. So I'm saying that jokingly, but I'm also being serious because it, it would be inexpensive, but it's very nice. And it's, so anyway, Jill, I put that out there. An office, Home Depot, tiny home. They got some nice ones.
All right. Are we okay to move on now to unincorporated county updates?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Nancy McKibben is coming up. She'll provide her update for unincorporated North County.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Nancy McKibben and I am Assistant to the County Administrator and I represent the unincorporated communities of North County. And I'm the first one to speak. As you know, I have two other colleagues that represent the other geographical areas. So we'll start just with a brief primer on what those areas are and their subjective boundaries, more or less, because we really didn't have any guides to go by. So the map shows representation of those unincorporated areas and the, and the nearly 300,000 people that reside in them. And so we've taken a stab at trying to estimate what the population is in those geographic areas. And I would want to emphasize, these are very approximate because they're based on 2020 census data and the census tracts don't generally line up with municipal bound, municipal boundaries. And so it's very difficult to estimate. But what struck me was the, the color differential. And the purple seemed so much bigger than the, than the green, but the numbers were kind of like similar. So I do want to point out that we have in North County 8,700 acres of Brooker Preserve and four regional parks that add another 755 acres of open space. So when you look at that, it's, it starts to make a little bit more sense when you look at the different colors. So I get to start with talking about North County and how we build strategic partnerships. We have some wonderful partners up there. You've heard from a few of them from the Palm Harbor Community Service Agency this morning. But we also have a strong Greater Palm Harbor Chamber of Commerce. We have an emerging downtown Palm Harbor Merchants Association. And we also have an ad hoc group, Downtown Palm Harbor Advisory Board, that is working on implementing the initiatives of some of the county investment that has taken place in this part of North County. But it's also not just about downtown Palm Harbor. We work with other community organizations and partners, historical societies and nonprofit organizations. You've heard our FICA group talk about Feast. We have also starting to work, reach out and work with a lot of HOAs in the area. And importantly, we also work with our internal departments. We have gained relationships with Safety and Emergency Services. We work very closely with Public Works and of course, our Facilities and Rural Property Division and our Utilities. Talking a little bit more about that investment that the county's made in Palm Harbor, downtown Palm Harbor, is we are beginning to capitalize on the advan, initiatives that primarily have been started by our Housing and Community Development. So these are all partnerships that we have. Obviously, one person doesn't make things happen. It's, it's definitely a team effort. So we now have a downtown Palm Harbor master plan that was approved in 2020, our zoning tool, which is the Form-based code that was approved in 2021. You'll soon see, and you've seen drafts of the Streetscape and Parking Action Plan. All these documents have come up with recommendations and guidelines, and it really has made a difference. We have now over $11 million in new or, new construction or developments that are currently under permit or site plan review. So, and those are 2022 estimates. So this is a wonderful tsunami of development that's happening and it's really, we're really being able, able to leverage all the efforts that have been put into this area. We always like to talk about North County capital improvement projects, which there are more than I could fit on a, the couple of slides that I was allowed to have here. I will remind the board that you can always go to pinellas.gov/projects-and-maps. It's under the Public Works website. And get an interactive GIS map that'll show you all of the projects, their status, who the project managers are, and if you ever wanted to get more information. But here's just a few. Nebraska Avenue roadway improvements. We're going to do safety and operational improvements from alternate 19 to Westlake Boulevard. It's currently in the design process. Revere Road, you may remember that this road connects the library to recreational complexes and numerous churches from Nebraska Avenue to Tampa Road. It is currently in design. Ankleut Road, roadway and stormwater improvements is very interesting because this is an identified target employment area. And the infrastructure improvements that are planned there are going to enhance attracting target employers and industry to that area as well. Shore Drive, bridge replacement in Ozona. This bridge is one of those 100-year-old bridges that is very unique architecturally. And our Public Works Department is working with the community to replace this bit of infrastructure with something that's appropriate for the community. Southern Bayou Boat Ramp and Driveway Improvements, that's been constructed and it's added a whole new dimension to ingress and egress for one of the few public access boat ramps in, in North County. We've got things going in Crystal Beach for drainage and roadway improvements that again, a lot of community involvement to do what's appropriate for that community, which does have an overlay. And our regional stormwater facility in Palm Harbor, which we're hoping it will maintain its ARPA construction schedule. It is challenging because as everyone has talked about, material costs, you know, are escalating. So our design team is working very diligent, diligently on that. And of course, you know, these are Public Works-dependent projects and our partners there do a great job. So we want to talk about some, our opportunities to identify issues and find resolutions in North County. This is, you know, nothing that is done by a liaison. It is done by a, a team. And it really revolves around connecting organizations, people, independent fire districts with the resources they need. So Eastlake Fire District was, just through some communication with Utilities and Safety and Emergency Services, were able to increase their community ratings. And this really is important because it has the potential to actually decrease property insurance premiums for everyone in that Eastlake Fire District. We create partnerships for the sustainable redevelopment maintenance of downtown Palm Harbor. We're actually working with the Chamber and Merchants to just do basic maintenance and we're hoping for a long-term solution to that. we're hoping for a long-term solution to that issue. And then our strategic plans, the parking and streetscape, we're, we are definitely looking to leverage the recommendations of our approved plans so that we can support that long-term economic growth. So, with that, I'll turn this over to my colleague, Chris Moore.
Morning Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm Chris Moore, Assistant to the County Administrator for Leomin. You know, our work begins with our partners who are truly the cornerstone of our efforts in the community. You know, we know many, many hands make for light work. Truly thank all these partners. And so, from day one, we've made a concerted effort to really strengthen partnerships with existing partners like the Florida Dream Center, Penellas Pow, Leomin Asian Neighborhood Family Center, but also looking to bring in new partners to bring resources into the community, folks like the St. Petersburg Foundation, the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay. And that work is really culminated into the implementation of a collective impact model. And that's really a structural form of collaboration amongst public and private partners, usually addressing complex social issues. And, you know, through that work, it's now taken shape. We've, you know, established a meeting structure, different meetings staggered over six weeks to really talk to partners, understand their challenges, their strengths, the, how to share resources, how to leverage each other's resources. And so, every six weeks, there's a tenant meeting for partners at the Leomin Exchange. Staggered, there's a meeting for the broader partner group that participates in the collective impact. And some 50 organizations or so that have participated and expressed interest in that shared service model. And finally, we have a, what we call a guiding group, essentially the policy group that's helping to develop strategy based on the feedback we hear from our partners. And that's represented by ACA Almonte, OMB Director Chris Rose, representation from the CRA Advisory Committee, the St. Petersburg Foundation, and the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay, who has, by the way, contributed $200,000 to this effort in addition to lending their expertise in implementing collective impact models throughout the community here locally. And invariably, you do a slide like this, you always leave off a partner. And of all partners to leave off on all days, PPLC is not represented there, but I want to give them a special call out here. You know, through that work, we've, we've established sort of a satellite library location at the Leomin Exchange. You know, nothing beats that in-person library experience, but any PPLC member can now order a book online, have it delivered to the exchange. They can pick it up at the exchange. We have a Dropbox location there in the parking lot. They can return it to the exchange. And we have a computer lab that folks can come in and get those e-resources that are available in a computer lab, you know, managed by another partner here, the Career Source at the facility. So, really appreciative of that effort and expanding the reach of those library services. Leomin Capital Projects, you know, we'll come back to you at the end of July for a work session presentation on the CRA specifically. Wanted to talk a little bit about capital projects funded separately from the CRA. The first one up there is Nearie Park. Really excited to see that groundbreaking target for early March. Belcher Ave, really 71st Street from 54th Ave to 38th Ave North. Great project there, putting in roadway improvements, drainage improvements, sidewalks on both sides of the road, including a 10 to 12-foot trail that'll run from 54th to 38th. And the city of St. Pete is gonna pick it up from 38th South to the Penellas Trail. So, folks in West Leomin will now have access to, directly to the Penellas Trail. And importantly, as well in the future, at 46th Ave, a connection point there to the Joe's Creek Trail Project, which we'll talk about here in just a minute. 46th Ave North, that's an ARPA project, so fast-tracked as it be for construction. It's in the design process right now, but that is drainage improvements. And sidewalk, eight-foot sidewalk on the north side of the road, including filling sidewalk gaps on the south side. Joe's Creek Trail Project, that's really the most catalytic project in Leomin's portfolio. So, that's restoration of the Joe's Creek Trail, excuse me, of Joe's Creek for flood mitigation, water quality improvements, but also putting a multimodal trail that'll run from West Leomin through Kenneth City, through Leomin, stopping at, in this phase, 34th Street or US 19. And so, importantly there, just like, you know, folks in Leomin will now have access to eventually the Penellas Trail. But importantly, folks, all the thousands of riders that use that trail will have access to Leomin. You can look at Dunedin over the last 15, 20 years, what that trail has done for their downtown environment and economic development potential it brings. And it's something we're hopeful for over, you know, the long-term here in Leomin to see that type of impact as well. So, really excited about that project. Leomin Regional Stormwater Facility, that involves water treatment and storage needs. That's an ARPA project that involves funding for acquisition. Another team is honing in on some parcels in particular that can be addressed for the water treatment. But that's a very, very big issue. It involves the Joe's Creek Industrial Park that we'll talk about here in just a little bit in terms of the both opportunities and challenges that lie there. And the last two are not ARPA, so their construction term is longer out. But 62nd Ave and 54th Ave both have roadway improvements planned. They're completing the preliminary engineering review stage at the end of the summer, which will ultimately result in preferred alternatives recommended that we can then begin the design process for those improvements. Again, to Nancy's presentation earlier, you know, the Assistant Two's really wanted to show here how we're working in the community on a day-to-day basis, listening to the challenges residents face and looking at ways we can not only bring our resources to the table and in this case, you know, we've heard complaints about crime and prostitution and drugs that still exist there in Leomin. And we've, you know, really enhanced our coordination with Penellas County Sheriff's Office, code enforcement, our internal partners, community development, some different ways we're trying to address that. Look to come back to NFY24 with opportunities to enhance our neighborhood watch organizations, a park ambassador program potentially, which is really, you know, similar to Neighborhood Watch, but focused on the parks where they're experiencing some vagrancy issues and have folks there to, you know, put eyes on the park on a daily basis and help report activity just like in a Neighborhood Watch setting. And nuisance properties, you know, we know unfortunately, there's, you know, bad actors and repeat offenders and they also know that they're, you know, very good at eluding and navigating through the legal system to stall their, to continue their operations. And that's something that we've really focused our efforts on increasingly in discussions about some of those properties in particular and something we hope to come back to you in the next fiscal year to discuss more. And on the horizon, so the Joe's Creek Industrial Park Master Plan, really a big-ticket item here. So, you all were briefed recently on the Teal Study from Ford Penellas, the Target Employment Industrial Land Study. In that study, they have recommended a new target employment center category, the TEC Local, which would allow areas to open up to more flex development, mixed-use development. Also recall that for local jurisdictions to take advantage of those land use changes, they called for some type of a visioning study to be conducted. And even aside from the need for that, you know, it's really been an area that's been a focus point for our CRA Advisory Committee for many years now, understanding the potential that really lies there. You know, it's just really the concentration of the largest parcels in the CRA. Lot of redevelopment potential, lot of challenges, and really hope to address that in the master plan. Look at, again, tying back to that regional stormwater facility, that area experiences nuisance flooding. It's the employment center of the community. One way or another, we need to address those challenges and this will be the vehicle we hope to begin that process. And some real positive activity in that area. Tesla, as you see there, obviously that's in the news fairly recently, again, for that building reselling, which is a very positive impact for the CRA. And it's really put a lot of positive pressure on the surrounding parcels. You also might have seen recently the next-door neighbor to them, another five-acre parcel sold for some $7 million, I think, fairly recently. So, that's adjacent right there in the industrial park area. Lot of, again, potential opportunities and challenges that we want to address. The Form Based Code, it's another big item coming your way. So, it's been through, you've been briefed on it. It's been through the LPA, recommended for approval, slated to come back to you for final adoption in December with looking to target an effective date of January 2024. And again, that's a corridor-focused approach, looking at US 19, 34th Street, 54th Ave, Haynes Road, and portions of 28th Street as well, which will, you know, all that will help set the table for that industrial park area as well. And as I mentioned, I'll be back in the end of July for a work session on the CRA. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Quick.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you. Can you go back and talk about the timeline? I noticed on the Nearie Park, the groundbreaking in March. And then what is the completion timeline? How long?
I think it's anticipated construction for roughly a year.
And that's the complete plan?
For, for the master plan construction, yes. And so, that'll ultimately result in the open field area, a dog park slated for there, a large multipurpose recreational field, and then a series of playgrounds adjacent to the, to the Leomin Exchange to be going in.
All right. And 46th Avenue that you're talking about, November 24, is that just the western side?
That is actually, that's the stretch, and thank you for pointing that out, between 49th Street and roughly 34th Street.
That's the completion, construction and starting in November 24 for the eastern part is what?
That's when the portion between 49th Street and 34th Street would break ground is November 24. That's an ARPA project. And the portion between, I guess, roughly 58th Street and 49th Street, that I believe is coming back to you for a recommendation of a ward in the next couple of weeks. I don't know if it's the next agenda meeting, but it's, it's, it's on the next agenda.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any more questions, members? No?
I'll turn it over to Brian Loack, who, if he wasn't already the hardest-working man in Penellas County, I think his latest appointment certainly makes him.
Come on up, Brian.
Good afternoon.
Which hat are you wearing right now?
Brian Loack, Assistant to the County Administrator for Central and Southern Unincorporated Penellas County. So, for mid and south unincorporated communities, two of the, two of the big groups that we work with, first one being in the Greater Ridgecrest Community, which includes Dansville, the Friends of Ridgecrest. And this is an organization that the community put together and it's made up of residents, service providers, law enforcement, and also city of Largo as well as Penellas County. We meet monthly. Each, each group reports out, so it really keeps the, the community engaged and involved and updated on what's going on. We also do project coordination through them. Down at the south, southern tip of the county is the Terra Verde Community Association. This is the umbrella organization made up of elected, an elected board from all of the HOAs on the island. They meet monthly, but in addition to that, they have subcommittees, the Governmental Affairs Subcommittee, they meet monthly. I meet monthly with them just to give them an update on things that we've got going on and they can bring up issues that we, that the communities faces so we can get ahead of those. And we also run project coordination through them. Just a reminder that when, when we started these positions back in 2021, the first thing we did was we convened the communities and we got together and we said, what's your goal for the community? What do you want to see your community look like in the future? And based on that, we created the Greater Ridgecrest Community Plan as well as the High Point Community Plan. And these set out goals and strategies and also identified priority projects. At that time, there is no established funding source for either the High Point or Ridgecrest communities. So, we said, this is a good starting point. We've got a plan and we know the projects that you want to see come to fruition, but we don't know when we'll, we'll be able to get to work on those. Then ARPA happened. And because of your commitment to these communities, there's tens of millions of dollars in projects, quality-of-life projects in those communities that have been identified for in some ca, in most cases, decades. And now we have the ability to go in there and get to work. First one's the High Point Community Park. That design will be complete, is scheduled to be complete this month and construction will begin in February of next year. We're currently in discussions with the city of Largo as well as the school district to finalize joint use inter-local agreements. That'll be coming to you soon. And just as a reminder for, for those watching and those new to the conversation, the school district, they are providing the land, the high, the former High Point Elementary. We are covering the costs of the construction of the park and the city of Largo will take on the operation and maintenance and programming of the facility. Next is the Dansville Community Park. This 30% design will be complete later this summer and construction is slated to begin in the fall of next year. This is a former, well, it's, it's pretty much just a underutilized vacant partial with the stormwater facility on it right now in the heart of the Dansville community. So, this will provide park, park recreational opportunities for folks in that immediate area. McKay Creek Greenway Trail runs from the northern tip at Taylor Lake Park, runs south along McKay Creek through the Ridgecrest community, connects to Ridgecrest Park, runs south through the Pine Wood Cultural Complex, connects Heritage Village, the whole Pine Wood campus, as well as Walsingham Park to the south. And that will have some finger connections coming off of them in the future. 119th Street Landfill Remediations, this is a former landfill site on 119th Street, South Valmerton Road in Ridgecrest. The ARPA dollars are being used to that. We've gone in there and figured out what's, what's underneath the ground. And now we are putting together a design to remediate for that. And the goal at the completion of this project will be that we have a clean slate, a flat slate, as well as a system in place to handle the gases and what's not, whatever's underneath the ground. And in addition, that'll contain parking that will be used at the, at the Pine Wood facility to the south. And then the future goal of that is to take that clean slate and use it for recreational purposes, as was the desire of the community. We just don't know yet exactly what that's gonna look like. That'll be the next stage after we get additional community feedback. That construction is slated to start in December of next year. The Terra Verde Recreation Center, this is the only project on here that's not ARPA-funded. This is, we're using penny dollars on this. The design, the construction documents just began last month and the design will be complete in September, might be October of this year. We're getting ready for a third community meeting on this within the next month and construction will begin in October of this year. Cross Bay Youth Recreation Center, this is kind of phase one of that unincorporated Seminole redesign, master plan. This is being done with ARPA dollars as well. 30% design will be completed October of this year and construction is slated for November 2025. And in addition to these projects, High Point and Ridgecrest, there's a ton of sidewalk and road resurfacing projects, safe route to school projects in these two communities. A big thing, as anyone who's driven through these communities will know, is connectivity and access for, these communities, they lack sidewalk connections. There's, there's schools, elementary schools in both of these communities. And if you go there in the morning or the afternoon, you'll see grandma, mom, dad walking their kids to school with strollers. A lot of times that's in the street or in it, on, on the side of the road on a ditch. We're putting sidewalks in there to make that connection safe to schools. And on the horizon, I meant, I just mentioned two, unincorporated Seminole U Sports, that SYA property acquisition will be coming soon once the governor signs the local bill, the local, the special act. And then we'll be talking about a funding mechanism for that. We want to develop an economic development strategy for mid-county. Our Penellas County Economic Development Department has tremendous resources available throughout the county for residents and business owners. But we really want to see what does economic development look like in these individual communities. And then we will continue to coordinate and identify issues, try to get ahead of these to make sure that we have resolutions and we keep you informed. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions, anyone?
Not a, not a question, just, just so happy to see the Terra Verde project on the timeline.
Commissioner Eggers. Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, probably a general comment, rather than a question for you, Brian, but I just, I really wanted to, again, circle back to when the three positions were created, the Assistant to the County Administrator positions, and, in my opinion, how valuable they've been, certainly for the Laillman area, and all that has been accomplished in that first county CRA, and the, involving the residents, involving the partners, building relationships. I mean, that doesn't just happen overnight. And so having a person responsible for that area, and the mid-county and south county, and, of course, I'm going to circle back to Nancy in north county as well, because it is incredibly important, that the coordinated effort, focused effort, one that is talking about what we do today, but also has a visionary effort, is in place. And with you all at the helm, with you all working internally with staff, building relations in the community, it's just been invaluable. So I just really want to tip my hat off to all three of you for the work that you do. And it's, sometimes it's painstaking, but for the most part, it's pretty exhilarating, because you're reaching out and talking to residents about what they want. And really, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. And then crossing over department, departments to help get things done is really, is really key. So, again, great work. Keep it up. We've got a lot of things in play, and I know you all will all be good stewards of that responsibility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Good job, Brian, as always. Thank you. Okay, now are we on the recreational vehicles and mobile home parks?
Yes, Madam Chair, and Carol Strickland from Housing and Community Development will be making a brief presentation. She, as well as Kevin McAndrew, who is our Building Development Review Services and Code Enforcement Director, is also available for questions.
Good morning.
He's here.
Good morning. Carol Strickland, Housing and Community Development Director. I'm here this morning to review with you a requested change to allow RVs in mobile home parks. I'll review how we currently regulate RVs in mobile home parks, some of the considerations that we looked at in making our recommendation, what those alternatives are, and of course, take any questions you may have. As you're aware, this was a citizen-generated change to look at allowing a certain percentage of RVs to be placed in mobile home parks. At the time the request was made, there was a case in front of the special magistrate, a code enforcement case. I'm pleased to let the board know that that property has come into compliance, so now we're able to move ahead with this conversation. The county also did receive a letter from James Ayotte. He's the Executive Director of the Florida Manufactured Housing Association, expressing interest in the proposal. I did call Mr. Ayotte and talk to him, and they're very willing to review any proposed ordinance changes. At this time, they're not taking a definitive position in support or otherwise with regard to the change on behalf of their members, pending what that discussion looks like, but they're very interested in working with us, which we appreciate. So currently, mobile home parks are treated as residential uses, and you find them primarily in the RMH zoning, residential mobile home zoning. They are permanent housing solutions. Recreational vehicles really fall within a totally different category. They're called temporary transient accommodations, and they're really looked at as commercial uses. You find RVs in campgrounds in commercial recreation zoning districts. When we did a review of where RVs are located, we also inventoried some of the mobile home parks where RVs are grandfathered in. And I do have some information on that, if the board wants some more information. But primarily, the RV parks are in the commercial recreation district, and then some mobile home parks in addition have RV slots. Other than that, RVs are not allowed in residential districts, except in storage. So you can't stay in an RV in a single-family district, for example. They're also not really accessory to mobile home park use, they're a separate use. And then one thing I want the board to keep in mind is, they are transient, they're not permanent occupancy. So if we're looking at allowing RVs in mobile home parks, it would not be for permanent living accommodations, they don't meet the minimum housing code, that they would be for transient stays. So we did do an inventory of our RV parks in Pinellas County. We also looked at those mobile home parks that do allow, are grandfathered in, to allow mobile homes. We did discover that there are about 20 RV parks total in the county. 10 of those are in the unincorporated areas, and in those 10 RV parks, there's 3,762 RV spaces. So one of the questions we were asked when we were briefing commissioners was, what does it look like now, when we have over 3,700 RV spaces currently? We also determined that in the unincorporated area, 15 of our mobile home parks do have grandfathered in spaces for RVs. And you can see, they're pretty evenly distributed around the county. So the county, in general, is well-served with recreational vehicle opportunities. Some of the considerations that we looked at from both sides is allowing RVs in this manner would expand the availability of RV vehicle sites to serve visitors. We also looked at potential impacts to existing stable residential mobile home parks. Potentially, it could reduce the number of permanent housing mobile homes sites, as sites within the mobile home parks converted to RV use. And we were also concerned about compatibility between the RVs that come and go and are transient with the permanent residents in some of our parks. And if RVs are allowed, there would need to be the infrastructure to support them, whether from accessibility or sanitary facilities. We also looked at enforcement. They are, as I mentioned, intended for transient occupancy and not permanent residence. We would be looking at that in terms of enforcement issue. And also, if we set a certain percentage of that park that would be set aside for RVs, we'd want to monitor and make sure those parameters are being honored. So really, the alternatives are to maintain the current regulatory framework, or to look at allowing RVs in mobile home parks up to a certain percentage. If the board does wish to pursue that alternative, we would recommend that you look at allowing them on a case-by-case basis, asset type two use, which would mean that the Board of Adjustment and Appeals would hold a public hearing for that specific park, look at the parameters for that specific park. The residents and surrounding property owners would receive notice, and it could be considered on its merits. We would ask that there be site plan review, to make sure the park can accommodate the RVs, using standards that we would create for sanitary facilities, accessibility, and potentially for compatibility. And we would also limit that number of RV sites, either as a percentage or maximum number within that mobile home park. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How many residential mobile home parks do we have grandfather, that are grandfathered to allow the RVs?
Of the 104 unincorporated mobile home parks, 15 have RVs. And the number of RVs that are total grandfathered in are 319 in those 50 parks, 15 parks.
In those 15 parks, do they have a limit, a percentage or anything, or is it just?
It really is all over the board. Some of them have one or two, some of them have more than half of the spaces. So it's on a case-by-case basis. But overall, it's about 20, in those, in those 15 parks that allow grandfathered in RVs, total, it's about 25% of the spaces have, are RVs.
And this is, the, if we, if we do make a change, obviously, it's permissive, not mandatory, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure why a mobile home park would necessarily even want to entertain this, but if they, you know, if we made the change, it would be up to them as far as setting aside, you know, particular spot of the park, the percentage, the number, the, and would we put in a, would it fall under a two-week, 30-day, 60-day, what's temporary transient?
I would like to ask Kevin McAndrew to come up and talk about the minimum housing code and transient, if I may.
Commissioners Kevin McAndrew, BDRS Director. As Carol was indicating, the temporary housing is defined as no greater than 30 days. If we're talking about enforcement's considerations, I think one of the, one of the areas that we would want to try to minimize is RVs that are making that last road trip, that never have an intention to leave a property. And there's really two pieces to that. One is the minimum housing compliance. The second actually has to do with emergency evacuation. RVs are not strapped down, they need to be transportable, they need to be operable. So if, if the commission had a desire to move this forward, we would want to, again, try to minimize these, this type of occurrence, where we know that RVs are registered, they're plated, again, to just try to not get into that type of enforcement and compromise potentially a vulnerable situation during evacuations.
Would we, would you foresee that being on the county, kind of going in and checking all that, or the mobile, having a checklist for the mobile home park to make their evaluation of whether they even wanted to allow that person to rent space?
Well, we would want to first put that burden on the mobile home park. And again, typically, we're not, code is not proactively policing this type of activity. It's really, when we receive a complaint, that we would then act on it.
And then I don't, you may not be able to answer this, but the ones that we have grandfathered, are they, we have, we have mobile home parks of varying levels of quality and upkeep. That's the nicest way I can figure to say that. And so the ones that are grandfathered, the ones, you know, are those some of the high-end ones, or are those some of the lower-end ones? Do we know?
Yeah, no, I'm not really.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, that answered my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, thank you. So, so we have, just on 104 unincorporated mobile home parks, how many of those are single-owned versus fee simple lots? Do you know?
I don't have that information with me today, but we do have it available, and we can provide that to you.
Yeah, I guess my thought about the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, I guess they can listen to residents that, that live there, but the owner essentially, I guess the owner's looking for that, would be looking for that, looking for some kind of appeal process to allow that number, a certain number in his, in his lot. Is that?
Yes, and we would use the type-two-use criteria that the Board of Adjustment uses. They have certain considerations in the code that they use, and those would apply in this case as well.
Okay. And so we're, and definitely limiting it down to a certain small percentage.
We would make a recommendation on the, on the percentage.
And I do, I am a little bit concerned about storm protection. You know, the others are at least having to be tied down, and these obviously aren't. And what damn, what, I guess, danger does that create for the others, if they end up getting blown into other, you know? So I do think those are concerns. And, and again, I'm not, I'm not really trying to make a big statement, but, you know, places for people to live in our county, you know, reasonably priced, has been difficult to keep. I know that the state has, you know, changed all of the Airbnb requirements, and has made it kind of a, you know, you can basically build them almost anywhere and have them anywhere, and they've converted a lot of what would normally be lower-priced housing. I know a lot of them that are, that used to be $750 a month rentals, that are now been upgraded to Airbnbs, and are now $3,000, $4,000 a month. So I don't know what that conversion number is, and what amount of places took off the market for what I would call affordable housing. Certainly significant. So I worry a little bit about that, but if we can at least keep that number down, I think it preserves that, that type of housing in our, in our community, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Carol and Kevin. Couple of questions. So, did you say that the maximum rental would be 30 days?
What Kevin had indicated was that under the minimum housing code, it's considered transient if it's 30 days. So it would be regulated under the housing code, and we wouldn't write that into these new standards necessarily.
Okay. So what I'm concerned about, in addition to the comments that Commissioner Egger said, was, you know, we're potentially putting a commercial activity into another residential area, which is the, that is the number-one consistent concern that I get expressed here from residents, is, what are you going to do about the, you know, the VRBO in my neighborhood? That's, you know, it's a frat party every weekend, and it's destroying the fabric of our, of our community. So I have a, I have a real, real concern with that. And my initial thought was, well, if we had that as maybe a minimum of, I don't know, 60 days or 90 days, maybe it would, it would, it would not be that activity, but it doesn't meet minimum housing standards, so you, so you can't do that. So those are kind of the concerns that I have. Now, this would be on a case-by-case basis, and it would be up to the, you know, the RV Board of Appeals and Appeals, and it would go through that process. So maybe it's not as much of a concern for us on this, on this board, but then you, you get into the question of, how much housing does that take off the market as well? So I have, I just have some, some concerns about it in general. And would this be, would these be subject to bed tax dollars as well?
I do not believe so, but I'll confirm that.
Commissioners, we are running really behind today, so what I'd like to do is ask if, do we have a consensus to move this forward, or do people have enough concerns that they would rather not, and we can discuss it another day? What is your pleasure? What?
Move it forward.
I'm not comfortable with it moving forward.
I'm comfortable moving forward and having, you know, that discussion at an agenda briefing again, and what an actual ordinance would look like. So yeah, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, well, if it's that, I'd be okay, but not to put it on the agenda for an up or down.
No.
Okay, do you have enough direction to?
I do. Thank you so much for the feedback.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my understanding that the amendments relative to this topic would become a part of our annual review for Land Development Code changes and amendments, so you will definitely see it again.
All right, thank you. And now, Kevin, did you want to say a few things before we get to the agenda briefing? You said you wanted to talk about ARPA real quickly.
Yes, ma'am. Kevin Knutson, Assistant County Administrator. My intent was to, when we got to that agenda item, talk about it, but I'd be glad to do it now, if you'd like.
What is your preference? Talk about it now.
Okay, great. So when I met with each of you, I gave you notification that we had failed to upload the correct memo from the Pinellas Community Foundation. It was in your emails back in April, but I sent it to you again today, so that you would have it currently. It's my intent to come to you next Tuesday on this item, and introduce that into the record, so that it's properly part of the discussion on that item. And also, at the same time, I'm going to withdraw two of the staff recommendations, based on our conversations and what we learned through that. The analysis that we did was not as complete as I would have liked it to be, so I'm going to withdraw our recommendations on Avara Health and the YMCA. And what we will propose as a staff recommendation is that we adopt the PCF's second set of recommendations, with the exception of the recommendations, with the exception of the African Peoples Education and Defense Fund. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for that, Kevin. I just, I have a, I guess maybe a general comment for discussion on the, on the Florida Dream Center Award. About roughly $1.2 million of that is for basically the county to give the Dream Center that money and then give it back to the county to purchase the, the building and, and the land. I would like for us to consider the option of a long-term lease with the Dream Center of a dollar a year or something like that for, for 20 or 30 years. And then we take that, that $1.2 million, and that, we can stretch those dollars further and move that into the next round of, of ARPA funding. So something to, to consider. I don't know how you all feel about that, but just a thought I have.
Commissioner Eggers?
To move it into, to redistribute here, or to the final round of, that we still have to discuss?
My thought was the final round, but it could really probably be either, but, but since this round is already, I guess, kind of done.
No, but for the record, did you want to say that again?
I don't know that I want to move, because we wanted $10 million to these large projects. But. Thank you. And, and so I wouldn't want to move it to the next round, because there's three projects that didn't get fully funded. And so, you know, one got 14%, one got 22%, one got 19% of what their ask was. So I wouldn't want to move it to the next round. I would want, I would rather try to fully fund or fund those further than, than that. And I'm not opposed to your idea, I think your idea is a good idea, it's just that I wouldn't want to move it to the next round. I would rather try to fully fund all the projects that scored high enough to get money.
I'm, I'm fine, fine with that as well.
Anybody else? Commissioner Justice?
I'm all for assisting the Dream Center in everything they do there. My only concern is, is the funding for that would be in our affordable housing portfolio. So we would be taking money out of what we would be spending on affordable housing and putting it into the ARPA category. That's basically what we're doing here. If we, if we don't, the money that the Dream Center would be putting in would not come back to our general fund or come back to ARPA, it would go into affordable housing, because that's what paid for the, the facility in the first place, if I'm not mistaken. And so you're, we would be making the decision, and, and I, you know, a dollar a year, I would love to do that for a lot of our nonprofits, but if we do that, the 1.8 million, we're just making a conscious decision to move it from Affordable Housing and Land Assembly Fund to ARPA, basically. So, just so we're going in eyes wide open.
If I could also point out that the 1.8 million, the funding is proportionally for buying it, but also some of it's for doing repairs and upgrades there. So we'll have to get you a breakdown of that project so you know what's for the purchase.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think there was 1.2, like roughly 1.2 million that was actually for the purchase of the property, and the rest was for, was for upgrades to it, so.
It sounds.
So that 1.2 million is not, is not ARPA dollars? Is that my understanding?
No, the, the property was, and someone, budget can correct me if I'm wrong, was part of Land Assembly penny money for affordable housing. It was part of the Lelman Heights project, and so any money that comes back from that would have to go back in, again, tell me if I'm wrong, would theoretically go back into Land Assembly for future affordable housing priorities. So it just, if we're going to fund something else, whether it's any of the other programs on the list, we're making, doing that versus future Land Assembly.
And that is our understanding as well.
Right, is that it, Kevin? Do you need any more direction?
No, ma'am, that was it. Thank you.
You'll get with him later?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Alright, the agenda briefing, Jill.
Okay, so we have meeting on Tuesday, June 13th, and we have presentations and awards that'll include our Youth Advisory Committee, their year-end presentation. We do have a partner presentation for Hurricane Season Kickoff by our own Kathy Perkins. And then we do have a partner presentation from our Clerk of Circuit Court and Controller, Mr. Burke, on the 2022 audit. We have citizens to be heard, and then we go into public hearings. You'll be seated as the countywide planning authority for item number six, which is a ordinance to amend the countywide plan from recreation open space to public semi-public on Ridge Moore Boulevard. You will also have countywide case for item number seven, which is a land use change from employment to transportation utility, and this is on about 18 and a half acres on Stony Brook Drive in unincorporated Largo. This is property that's adjacent to AirCo. Related to our master plan. Number eight is a request for zoning change from Employment One to Airport. This is basically a request that, that we're making as it relates to the airport and changing designations, again, either on or, or next to the AirCo property. Item number nine is our resolution for revising our water, wastewater, and reclaimed water rates for the coming four-year period, I'm sorry, yeah, four-year period, '24, '25, '26, and '27. And I know you've had your one-on-ones, but if there's any concern or comments today, we do have Jeremy Wa, our interim director, here, as well as Chris Rose, of course, on budget.
Question?
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to get into the, those specific questions today, but I, I, this is the hearing, we're only having one hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I, I, I never did ask the question, but I wondered why we went to just one meeting in June instead of two, but, because for me, this kind of hearing needs to be at 6:00 at night, not at 9:30 in the morning, or whatever this is, turns out to be. So I'm a little bit concerned that a rate change in utility services is being done during the day. So that's, that's my only comment, and I don't think it makes it accessible to our residents.
Commissioner, we discussed this at the time of the work session item on the rates. I can't explain why there was only one in June, but we did share that exact perspective when we agreed to use June 13th, because of the time limitations that relate to the notices. And because we only bill bimonthly, we wanted to put this, you know, date and the specifics on the utility bills so that we, we could. But I, I hear you, and, and we did, we were aware of this, we did share this with, with you, and we're hoping that with virtual and other ways of communicating with you, that, that, you know, we've allowed for enough notification for people to know.
So if we did it in July at that meeting, it doesn't give enough time for what, to, to get new rates implemented for October 1?
That's correct.
How much time do you need?
I don't recall the specifics, but I know it's more than 60 days. That's why we had to make a decision back in April, or early May.
So the idea then was be to have the, the rates in ahead of time enough so that people understood what was coming?
That's correct.
But rather, but we don't, we're not sure that we're giving enough communication to our residents for this meeting, other than the standard things that we do. So have we put something in our bills that, that say that we're having this meeting?
Yes, we did.
Perfect.
We did that, and we, and some additional things that we don't normally, that we're not, that we're not required to do, but yes, we did.
So I should have led with that. I should have led with that question, then.
What's that? I'm sorry.
To ask you what you've done to make sure that people can tune in for this.
Yeah, so in addition to having it on the bills, the utility billing, we've provided a series of notifications to our wholesale users, as well as our, some of our community groups, and then communications has been helping with others. But we also, you know, know that, that it's a sensitive thing for you to do this in the afternoon, we get it, and hopefully we've been able to let people know ahead of time.
But this hearing was put, was put in our utility bills?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Makes me feel a little better. Thanks, Jill.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we had this presentation a few months back, we had talked about going out to bond to smooth these rates out, so this doesn't have anything to do with that right now, right? We're just talking about the rates now, and the bond will, that'll be a separate issue down the road?
This is, yes, that's correct. This is to adopt the rates, and we'll be able to make modifications as we make additional decisions. But I believe the smoothing for bonding was considered by the rate consultant, and it, it's more a factor of the cost of the future improvements and the cost of the utilities in the future, not the funding mechanism. So that's why it's the rates.
Okay. But, but, but there was direction given for A, B, and C, which is a reflection on the rate structure, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Which will require some bonding.
Yeah, which will require some bonding.
Yep.
But it was more that, that B path instead of the A or the C?
And that's, that's correct. That, that's the path we had the consensus for and the one that we moved into. I guess what I'm saying is, the rates, though, are going to, the costs are the same, whether we pay for it in the future with bonds, or whether we pay for it, but we've, we've anticipate, you know, we've anticipated that in these rates.
Okay. Alright, Jill?
Sorry, I forgot. Okay, so the consent agenda, items 10 through 34 include some of your normal reports and receipts and minutes, and then under the county administrator, we do have item 23, which is a ward-of-bid for fire protection system services, and that is a little under $2 million for a three-year term. 24 is surplus and authorization of county-owned equipment and vehicles, and they are, the assets themselves are listed for you in the agenda materials. We do have, item 25 is the receipt and file of non-procurement items that the administrator has approved. Item 26 is a budget amendment for the current fiscal year, '23, to align several appropriations from reserves, as well as realign some of the ARPA and CIP project dollars. Item 27 is a ward-of-bid for guardrail contract for Keystone Road from East Lake Road to Hillsboro County Road, and that's also, I'm happy to say, the engineer's estimate was, was actually almost right in line, so hopefully, hopefully our projects, our funding amounts are going to be okay on some of these. Yes, sir.
Question on this one. I had asked before, I never saw anything, or if I, I should say I never did see anything, don't know whether anything was sent, but regarding the rail itself and the, and the, and the color of that rail, and, because I've had a lot of folks from up there talk about, this is a, a scenic corridor, I know, the East Lake is, and this is fastly becoming that with the trail and everything. And the second concern that's come up are, at key intersections along Keystone, the visibility issue when you start putting those guardrails in. So, and, you know, as you go through between, between the intersections, it's probably okay. As you get closer to the intersections, wondering how those guardrails are actually going to come into play through that intersection. Are they going to come in? Are they going to, are we going to stop them at some, and, and I know those are details, but once we approve this, then, you know, we're, it's out of our hands.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great question. So the guardrails are not supposed to be installed in the visibility triangle, and they're, you know, the height of them is such that it's, it's not intended to be at a driver's visibility level. The height of the rail itself is below that. But they're not supposed to be in the visibility triangle, which would mean they would stop. I just don't know exactly what that distance is, but I can find out for you.
Okay, alright. And the other issue?
On the color?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to follow up on that for you.
I just, all I had asked for was the cost difference, to see if.
I recall, I recall the request, and I, I don't believe we ever answered that. I know it needs to be a highly reflective color, or, or, you know, that, but we need to get you the cost data you requested.
A highly reflective, okay, thank you. Look forward to that.
Well, or preferably highly reflective. I don't actually know if that's a real term.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll make sure we get that to you, Commissioner, before Tuesday. Alright, 28 is a ward-of-bid to Ajax. This is for our ARPA local roads contract, so there are locations all over the county. You can look at the exhibits behind this item, but these are ARPA dollars, helping us advance some of our needed improvements from resurfacing and paving, and it is a little over $5 million that's proposed.
Just on this issue, and the, and the issue that Commissioner Justice brought up earlier on the content of the paving, that, that, I guess the state has opened that door. This is, this is not, we don't need to worry about that issue on this paving contract?
That's correct. This would, these specifications prove, precede.
Okay.
The new provision or allowance. And I, you know, we probably need to really have a conversation about that.
Yeah, I don't, I, I know this much about it, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's very new.
Yeah, thank you.
Ward-of-bid 29 is for Conan Graham for the Taylor Lake Seawall Project. This project is a little over 4, 4.4 million, and we've had a CIP ready for this in, in, in the '23 to '28, and the '24 to '29 plans. And we have a low bid that came in, sorry, 13% below the estimate, so we're feeling pretty good about this project.
13%?
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, that's why I said it. Hope I got it right. Item 30 is the, the bid award that we, that was referenced earlier for 46th Avenue North from 49th to 55th. And this is a reconstruction project that will include not only drainage, but we've got some sewer work to do, that utilities will pay for that portion, and then we do have the five-foot sidewalk on the south side and an eight-foot multipurpose path on the north side.
This is, this is really going to be critical, because Kenneth City has done a beautiful job on their portion of the roadway and sidewalks there, and for us to connect our part of it, to make it look identical, is going to be a huge benefit for the neighbors in there.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Item 31 is a joint.
Jill, I'm sorry.
It's alright.
It seems like, maybe I misheard, but this is, that was the second project that has come in under what we anticipated? Are we starting to see a trend that maybe kind of either holding or low, some lower prices, or is that just, you know, just?
We're not, I don't think we're sure yet.
Okay.
Now, Joe's here, and Chris is here, but it still seems to be kind of a little bit all over the place, but we do see, we are seeing estimates that are, I'm not talking about the bud, bid cost to budget, I'm talking about the bid cost to construction estimate, right? Because we still have projects that we know the construction estimate, because the, you know, maybe it was a penny project from years ago. But we are seeing some positive results on some of these, not all of them.
Egg prices are coming down, Commissioner, so.
Egg prices, yay.
Well, and some of the materials, some of the, the challenges with materials, it seems to be easing a bit as well. Let's see. Okay, so that was 46th. Item 31 is the, did I, did I do that? I mean, I think I got confused. Yeah, okay. Item 31 is our joint project agreement with the City of South Pasadena. This relates to a number of streets in, in that area that have portions that are ours and portions that are theirs, so it makes sense to do the project together. Item 32 is another joint project agreement. This one is with the City of Pinellas Park, so that in conjunction with our bypass force main project on Belcher, we are going to incorporate a project that they have. It originally started out as being just for the pump station, but it has been revised for the city improvement side. So the increase that you see in the backup for this project is largely related to that difference on the city side, not ours. But we know that it's going to be a very, very expensive, expensive project. But it's planned, and your new rates, hopefully that you approve Tuesday, are going to be good for this. Yeah, well, it's a $16 million project. I mean, it's a big project, but about five of that is Pinellas Park.
Item 32 is the list of lawsuits that, or 33, sorry, is a receipt and file report of lawsuits the county's been served with, that the county attorney is defending on your behalf. There's two suits there. One is an automobile accident, and one is a sidewalk trip and fall. One is an automobile accident, and one is a sidewalk trip and fall.
Did you have a, an item 34? It's from the Clerk of Circuit Court for auditing services. And then we'll go to the regular agenda. Item 35 is Second Amendment to our agreement with Schindler Elevator Corp. This is for our maintenance and repair services for elevators and escalators. It is. Yeah, this is a, this is a coordinated contract through administrative services. Item 36 is a grant application and grant agreement with the Aviation Administration for construction of the airco taxiways at the St. Pete Clearwater Airport. 37 is a memorandum of agreement and a cost sign-off document to reimburse U.S. Customs and Border Protection for certain technology and equipment at the airport. Item 38 is the Regional Opioid Abatement Funding Advisory Board Priority List of Recommendations for Your Approval. And if you have any questions or concerns, you know, Lourdes is here, or she'll be available before Tuesday, but I don't think any of this is a surprise to you. 39, similar companion item. This is for the City-County opioid abatement funding priority list that will go to the Florida Department of Children and Families. Item 40, amendments to the agreements with Florida Department of Children and Families and the Public Defender for Criminal Justice, Mental Health, and Substance Abuse Reinvestment Grant. And this is, I believe, an extension of the existing one, yeah. This extends it. So it's in our budget, in your adopted budget for the current year, and will be incorporated upon your approval for the next one. 41 is a letter to rescind funds for award acceptance with directions telehealth, remote access to crisis intervention for fiscal year 2021, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. And the recension is, the recension is for $57,000? I believe that's right? All right. The direction, Directions has decided not to proceed. That's why we're doing a recension. 42, management and budget, is the ARPA item that you had Kevin come up and speak to a little earlier. 43, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, so they were recommending that they take the, oh, thank you again. Taking the $67,000, that was not recommended for one agency, and providing it to another agency. And again, since three agencies didn't get fully funded, I would rather see that get divided among the three agencies. So each agency, we get $22,442 in addition to what's recommended, rather than giving it all to just one. The one that they're giving it to didn't rank as high as one of the other ones, so I think the fair way to do it is just divide it equally amongst the three, and let each one of them get the $22,000 versus giving all $67,000 to one agency.
I am not familiar with the background on this item, so Kevin's coming back up.
Hi, Kevin Knutson, Assistant County Administrator. Whatever direction you provide us is what we will do, and that sounds perfectly fine.
Commissioner Flowers?
I took a little mouthful. Thank you. Good idea, Commissioner Peters. I just have a question, because if you all recall, when we had the initial meeting regarding this particular funding, and I think I asked the question, like, can we just disperse those dollars amongst this? And basically, I thought what I was told was, no, it needed to go back into the pot to be redistributed for small scale, because that was, remember, it was the small scale?
That was one option, Commissioner, and I'm sorry if we left you with the impression that it could not be, but it can be.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. Well, I know I made the suggestion then, why don't we just distribute it, disperse it amongst what we have, and you won't have to go back through a whole nother process? And remember, it was, no, it needs to go back in the pot, and da-da-da-da, and all that. Okay, so thanks for clarifying that, because that's, I understood it differently.
So good, we're good. Good, right, Kevin?
Just sorry.
Yes.
So can, before Tuesday, we get a final chart, clean chart of what the final vote will be on with the...
I will provide that tomorrow.
Excellent. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. So I have one other question. Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. So, excuse me, I'm sorry. So Mr. Cooley provided an email to each one of us, and in the, the slide packet, it said, what's next, large projects round two. So there's a whole nother round that we're going through with 2.7 million?
Yes, ma'am. And those are limited to $500,000. So instead of just any amount that you want to apply for, the highest you can apply for is $500,000.
I get it. All right. I just, I'm just anxious to see this kind of complete. But, okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I, when Commissioner Scott brought up the 1.2 million, I was intrigued by it, and then Commissioner Justice said something which confused me, which is not unusual, Commissioner. I mean, I'm kidding. But I'd like to just make sure I'm clear on that on Tuesday as well, what that discussion was all about, so that we can just think about that. And also, on the St. Pete Free Clinic, which is something that, you know, I've supported, I think anything related to food, and it's a wholesale distributor to others that provide food, is really important. But I, I understand there was a recent, I guess, knowledge that we gained about their abilities to, to fund, maybe do some more funding on their own, which perhaps could just shake free, maybe a million, half a million, that we could choose to look at that in consideration of that information, and use that money to make whole on some of these other requests. Not whole, but at least, so just, we haven't really talked about that, except in our one-on-ones, and I just wanted to make sure that...
Certainly an option of the board to discuss at next Tuesday's meeting. If there's any funding that you want to change, just give us direction, and we'll make that happen. And you can do one of two things with that funding. You can either roll it forward to the next round, which was one of the options that Commissioner Flowers had brought up, or you can redistribute it to the groups that are on that list. Whatever your final decision is, we'll make that happen.
Okay.
Commissioner Peters?
I, you know, and I know about the bequest, and I think, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think if they got a bequest, I don't know if it's behoven of us to be taking away what they applied for, because we don't really know what that bequest...
That is true.
...was designated for. We don't know what the plans are for, and I think for us to make assumptions, and that's, you know, I, you know, they were applying for these funds, I think, before they got their bequest, they didn't know it was coming. I, I don't know that I would penalize any organization because a donor bequests something to them, and then it's up to us to then judge and say, oh, well, they don't need the money now. And I, you know, we don't know what their, what their strategic plan is, we don't know what their goals are for the next, I just, I, I'm apprehensive about doing that, so...
Well, I, I understand your comment, and that's why I said, I don't know anything about it. It was brought up to me in this one-on-one meeting, and there may be pers, there may be things that are attached to that money, that you're talking about, that have nothing to do with being able to go towards the construction of a new facility, right? So I get it. I'm just saying, if we know something that's pertinent, that, then I think we need to have the conversation. If, if we don't know enough, and it gets too muddled and muddy, then I'm, I'm, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Thank you.
There are just other people that are in need, and they may have the same need, depending on that situation, so. And we may not be able to find out about that situation, but in, in earnest, in being ingenuous, instead of disingenuous, the request was made for funding, they didn't know they had that money, and now they do. So I don't know what that means, how that translates, so...
Let me reach out to Pinellas Community Foundation and ask them if they know the answers to this question.
Yeah, if they, you know, so thank you.
I'll remind. Am I good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, item 43 is a trip grant request to DOT relative to the 126th Avenue roadway improvement project. This is a big grant request for a big project. We're asking for $18.7 million in the grant, which we would have to match at the same amount in order to fund design and construction of the connections of 126th Avenue that are not currently included. This includes a bridge over the Cross Bayou Canal, so that's part of the, part of the reason. It's, it's the grant request, you know, we just need your permission and wish us luck. All right, Safety and Emergency Services, this 44 is an agreement with the Palm Harbor Special Fire Control Rescue District. This is to purchase a new heavy-duty rescue vehicle, and it is a replacement of an existing vehicle, $600,000.
That was, that's the one that was in the, in the accident? There was an accident that destroyed the vehicle?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. 45 is an agreement with Stryker Sales LLC. This is for the purchase of electrocardiograph monitor defibrillators and services. And this, obviously, we have to buy these. 46 is a memorandum of agreement with the State of Florida Department of Health to preposition the KIM PAC assets and containers here in Pinellas County. There's no, no fiscal impact involved with doing this. Hopefully, it's just smart planning. And under Career Source Pinellas, you do have memorandum of understanding, 47, which is with WorkNet Pinellas, DBA Career Source, and Advanced Robotics for Manufacturing Institute. This is the, it's, I think the acronym is ARM. Probably familiar with that. And item 48 is the program planning budget for WorkNet, i.e. Career Source. 49 is the recommendation for a permanent executive official, chief executive official for Career Source.
Who's this Steve Meyer dude? No, I'm kidding. Good to have you, good to have you in the house, Steve.
Right behind me. I didn't realize that. Thank you, Commissioner. You'll see, you'll sit as the Emergency Medical Services Authority. You do have the issuance and renewal of certificates of public convenience and necessities for non-medical wheelchair transport stretcher van providers. The current certificates are gonna expire the end of this month. That's item 50.
Under item 51, this is a request to file suit in a case that was investigated by your Office of Human Rights. It relates to housing discrimination on the basis of disability. Under item number 52, this is a proposed settlement. Each of you have had the opportunity to read the confidential memorandum related to this case. If you have any questions related to it, I encourage you to give me a call prior to Tuesday. Under item number 53, I am actually going to bring you a report at the meeting on Tuesday. I have a couple of new attorneys that we've added to the staff that I'm going to invite to join us, if we can get them there, so that you all can be introduced to them. And I also am going to highlight one of our attorneys who received an award at a recent conference for local government, the local government section of the Florida Bar, Amanda Coffey, who some of you have been able to work with and interact with. So I'm gonna do some highlighting of my staff under county attorney reports on Tuesday.
Commissioner Berry will have a report for you on Tuesday, under 54, and then you do have...
Hey, Jill, Jill, real quickly, there was, her report under the consent had another trip and fall case, probably back a couple of years now, and we have been making a concerted effort to get caught up on that. So maybe if you could just have an update for us, I guess it doesn't have to come here for discussion, but on where we are on that, on getting those sidewalks finally, you know, caught up on all those trip and fall cases, or potential cases that are out there.
Sure. The backlog project that you funded two years ago for us is complete. We've done 100% of that, and we're gonna be discussing that exact topic with you at the Public Works and CIP meetings, not next week, but the following week, when we're doing our budget information sessions. So we can, we can give you more information specific to the sidewalks, and not just the backlog, but, but the ongoing replacement where we do repairs and, as well as new. So we have them in three different categories.
Great, thank you.
And if I could just add, for the benefit of the other commissioners, I did have this conversation with Commissioner Eggers. You're gonna continue to see some of these cases as we work our way through. You know, some of the cases are a year, two years old. Statute of limitations is four years, although I think that might have been reduced to two years during session this year. So you're gonna, even though the sidewalks have been, you know, remediated, you're gonna continue to see some of these cases work their way through the system, I suspect.
Okay, so under county commission, you have appointments to the TDC as, Commission as a whole. You have appointments to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee as a whole. You have appointment to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals as a whole. You have the appointment to WorkNet, Career Source, Board of Directors as a whole, and then county commission new business. That's 59. Well, that's what happened, Commissioner Eggers is correct. This is what happens when you only have one in a month. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. So with that said, I would like to, at the, out of respect for the time, some of us have appointments back over in the courthouse. If we can delay the county commission new business until Tuesday when we meet, I think that would be good. But do come on Tuesday, prepared for a long day. Okay? Della? Are you gonna feed us?
Not on Tuesday.
Make sure you bring your lunch.
Are we, do we have, do we have any kind of training back to the, to the, to the , okay?
Speaking of that, you all know, I'm sure, that those of you that are required, I think we all are, um, excuse me, hold on. For those of you that are required to do your filing, it's due on June 3rd, and this year is, it is electronic, so make sure, what?
July 3rd.
Yeah, isn't that what I said, July 3rd?
You said June 3rd.
Oh, well, I stand corrected. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. See you on Tuesday, if not before.